Welcome. It's lovely, well.
Turn the mic on. It's lovely to see the town chambers filled. I would like to open the Town Council regular session at 7:40 and the date is Monday, June 25th. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to inform the public that we have started our session at 5:45 with meeting with the Housing Authority at Village Gardens on Uncle Sam's Way. And we also had two interviews for two committees. And we've had our regular session, which now brings us to our regular meeting. Dale, roll call, please.
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session from June 11th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session, June 11th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Would any Town Councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a holiday sales license to American Promotional Events Incorporated, East Doing Business as TNT Fireworks, 1918 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to inspection by the fire chief prior to opening. Application by Melissa Gauduti, 40 Sherri Street, Unit 23, Wallingford, Connecticut. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Sure. I'm Charlie Bussey for American Promotional Events, DBA TNT Fireworks.
Thank you. And if you could tell us a little bit about TNT, that would be great.
Sure. We sell Rhode Island legal fireworks in the state of South Kingston, or in South Kingston. We have a location that's presently open and has been approved by the fire chief. We'd like to sell on the Fourth of July if possible.
Right. Does any Town Councilperson have any questions? Kathy?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to do your hours of operation, although I did see it yesterday at Tony's Pizza, you're right next door to Tony's Pizza.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to let people know that.
Yeah, I believe it's nine to nine, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not from that location, but I think it's-
Oh, you're not?
Each location sets their own hours, but we're required to be open 12 hours from the company. Typical hours are nine to nine.
Okay. I saw it was posted there yesterday, just to let everybody know where you are.
Thank you. Yeah, come by fireworks.
Carol?
How many locations do you have?
In Rhode Island?
Yes.
Oh, probably close to 30.
And how long have you been operating, since they changed-
Since they legalized them two years ago. Correct.
And you're in Connecticut also?
We're all over the nation. We're the nation's largest seller of consumer-based fireworks.
Wow. And when did you move into the location in Wakefield?
Typically, locations open around June 18th, but then we have to wait for inspections from a building inspector and fire chiefs, depending upon the local ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Polly, and then Jim?
Will you be going year-round?
No, we'll be open. It's a temporary business, so we'll be open through July 4th. We're just here to apply-
Yes, through the 4th.
Yes, ma'am. We're here to apply just to be able to sell on July 4th.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Jim?
When did you first incorporate?
Oh, we've been incorporated for a long time. We're a nation brand, so we've been incorporated for a long time. So I couldn't answer that for you.
I was trying to figure out how you captured that catchy name, TNT.
Thank you. I'm sure we paid a lot of money for it, I don't know.
Any other questions? And it's Charlie, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Any other questions for Charlie?
If none, then I move approval of License A.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, abstention. We wish you the best of luck, Charlie.
Thank you very much. Sheldon, that's night.
Bye-bye.
Our second license is a resolution granting a tourist accommodation license to Admiral Dewey Inn, 668 Matunik Beach Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for 10 spaces, 20 persons. Application by Leon Casparian, 93 Prospect Street, East Greenwich, Rhode Island. Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
And are you Leon?
Yes, Levon Casparian.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
If you could just tell us a little bit about Admiral Lynn?
Yes. Owning a bed and breakfast has been a lifelong dream of mine, so the opportunity came up where this was for sale. And my plan is to, from an operational standpoint, to keep pretty much everything the way it is today, no changes at all. The only plans I have is more cosmetic, painting the outside, putting the shutters back on. That used to be there, and landscaping. But operationally, everything's staying pretty much status quo.
I see that they had some kind of a yard sale or a couple of weekends ago.
Yes, the previous owner, you couldn't walk in the basement, so she pretty much is purging now, so, which is what all of us would be doing. But I'm very excited about it. I think we're going to bring some life back into it. She's been doing it since 1986, I believe, and now she has an opportunity to go to the West Coast and be with family. And I think it's a good time for her, and it was a great time for me, so it worked out beautiful.
That's great. Questions here at the table? Carol?
How was business for her, do you know? Was she full every summer?
No, actually, not that I've been counting, but she's got about 185 nights between now and mid-August.
Nothing.
Absolutely, end of August. And it's tailed off, but from her own admission, it's because she's 77-years-old, had some health issues in the last couple of years. So the attention she's paying to it is not where it was. So from an economic standpoint-
Yeah.
I think if somebody paid attention to it, you would find it at a normal occupancy rate as a hotel would have. So we're not really seeing, at least in her eyes, she's not really seeing deterioration.
Mm-hmm.
But her prices are also today, which I plan on keeping the same, are pretty favorable compared to competitive hotels.
And are you going to keep it open year-round? Or is that-
Actually, the way it's set up now is from January 1st till March 31st, it's shut down. I'm going to keep it the same, the same scenario. I might change that down the road, but right now I'm keeping everything the same from a time-of-operation standpoint. But if you look at historically, between about June 15th all the way to August 31st, you'd have about 70% occupancy, 60, 70%. The rest of the year is like less than 10%.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jim?
10 spaces, I mean 10 bedrooms?
There's actually 10 separate bedrooms, eight of which have private baths and two share a bathroom in the hallway, yes.
So that's okay. That's the definition of space then?
Yes.
You have a bedroom, okay. Is that the current accommodation level 20, Dale? I'm not sure what we- Is that the current Admiral Dewey license grant?
It is currently for 10 rooms and two persons per room is the way it's licensed today.
That's right, that's right. All right, that's fine, thank you.
Back in 1986, there was a, yeah, 10 and 20 here.
Polly?
You said this had been a lifelong dream. Have you, you have not done a bed and breakfast before?
I've been in sales all my life, basically selling paints. And I know paint doesn't talk back to you, but there's a lot of customer, there's a lot of customer response. So I've been in sales all my life, but this is the first time I'm doing a hospitality-type thing. But fundamentally, it's the same. It's customer service, making them happy when they leave, and obviously when they arrive. So in a sense, fundamentally, it's the same thing as what I've been doing. Instead of selling paints, I'm selling rooms, if you will. So.
Carol?
And you're going to have breakfast there too, did you say?
Yes, yes.
And how about you? Are you going to stay there and do the cooking and-
Well, it all depends on what the return rate is. No, I'm-
(laughing)
I actually enjoy cooking, so I'll be the one doing some certain creations, I guess is the best way of saying it.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Did you still have some of the people from Theater by the Sea staying there? Wasn't that used to be the place?
There's, yeah, there's actually quite a number of people that are, you know, repeat business, if you will, per year. There's Theater by the Sea. There's a, I think it was a Girl Scout group that comes every year.
Oh, good.
There are some races that take place in that area, Run for Kerry and also the Ocean Mist. So some people that come and stay every year. There's also family reunions that, according to the current owner, they've had four or five years of, you know, repeat business there, so. It's one block from the ocean, so it's a fun place.
Yeah, it's a love one.
And my intent to keep it like family-friendly and try to make, you know, people as happy as possible when they visit.
You might want to sell that there's a nice town beach across the way with some grilling areas and so forth that they could utilize.
Yeah. One of my first things-
Sell the future, come and sales too.
(laughing) Good. Thanks for the advice.
Many families have a lot of memories over there, so.
I keep on creating, my goal is to create some new ones and also keep some of the old historical ones to be repeated, so.
Jim?
I don't know if you can answer this question, or Dale. Bed and breakfast, does the owner have to occupy it with guests there and tourist accommodation? You can have a manager?
It's not supposed to be a manager or the owner.
Manager or the owner.
Yeah. It will be occupied by either a manager, which would be a family member, or myself, because I don't, obviously, we don't want to go overnight not having anybody there. So my plan is to occupy it. I would say it's going to be myself, most probably. It's either myself or my wife, but one of us will be there. But my plan is to sell my East Greenwich house and move in.
Ah.
So. You really can't run an inn, unless you're there, if you know what I mean.
Right.
Yeah. It's probably the biggest investment I've made in my life, so I wouldn't feel comfortable being remotely, you know, managing it, if you will. So I'll be there with the breakfast in the morning, so.
So does that mean that he falls under the hotel tax, sale tax rules?
Yes. Yes, I do.
So we need you to be aggressive and high occupancy to help us out.
Maybe we could push it with South County tourism.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Seeing none, then I move for approval of Resolution B, License B.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, consideration.
Motion carries. Best of luck, Leon.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, which brings us to our public hearing. This is a public informational hearing continued from June 11th, 2012, relative to an application from the South Kingston Land Trust for funding in accordance with the town of South Kingston's open space project funding policy. Said funding will be considered for potential purchase of developmental rights to 14-plus acres of Browning Farm, a portion of Assessor's Platte 75-3, Lot 44. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Aukerman.
Hello?
Actually, Jim?
No, I'm going to have to, Dale, if you have a recusal form for me, I'd appreciate it. And just to lay this out on the table, obviously, I'm recusing myself tonight on the matter of the Browning Farm. Obviously, my involvement as a real estate broker and trying to eliminate any appearance of impropriety. Along with that, also, Mrs. O'Neill has just rejoined the board of the South Kingston Land Trust, so I think that's a smart thing to do on my part. And I think, just quickly here, I have been substantially involved with bringing this deal together in my capacity as a Realtor and owner of coastal property. And we've had a number of interested buyers over the years. When I first started, I did not anticipate needing town funding.
Excuse me?
And quite honestly, have worked hard to try to find an alternative source of funds.
Jim, can you, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Better.
Is somebody saying that they couldn't hear?
Andy.
Okay. Thank you.
So anyway, I've worked hard to sell this property as a working farm, agricultural, preserved, open space. And not only because of my interest and love for that, but because the citizens of South Kingston have joined us on the council and at the voting booth with constant 75 to 80% overwhelming approval rates when these bond issues have come before the voters. Couple of weeks ago, on June 9th, I relinquished all interest in commissions and fees that I had the right to receive as a real estate broker. This contract has always been kind of a work in progress with different lenders and contributions coming in. Many pledges have been received, but contributions always, sometimes the collection rate is delayed. And we were running out of time with the various extensions. The deal had to be done. And just recently, we had a revised order, was entered by Justice Stephen White here, sitting on the South Kingston Probate Court. And that was on June 13th. And just to quickly read from that, that the section two here of the probate number 200540 revised order. "The parties agreed on June 12, 2012, to enter into a new purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the farm and the 50-foot strip, which new agreement excludes the commission and specifically states that there's no commission to be paid and no real estate broker involved in the transaction. In section three, Coastal Properties, Jim O'Neill, president, broker-owner, that's me, has executed a release of any and all claims for a commission and any other fee percentage of payment whatsoever under either the original sales agreement between the estate of Edward C. Browning and Roberta J. Mulholland as sellers and Resources Stewardship Company." So again, I think that's pretty clear. I don't, again, it's, recusing myself here is certainly easy to do when town money's involved. And quite honestly, I was always hoping to find the funds myself, so this wouldn't be necessary. But hopefully, with this recusal and disclosure, eliminate any appearance of impropriety. So I recuse myself of this.
Thank you, Jim. I also just wanted to reiterate that this is continued from June 11th, so that we would hear full disclosure to the public at the request of a Town Councilmember who was not able to be here on June 11th. At that time, I did ask if there was any public comment for anyone that wanted to speak on June 11th that was not able to be here tonight, and there was no public comment. So this is a continuance. So I would request that all comments and questions go through the chair. And at this point, are there any other questions from the Town Council or comments? At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Aukerman.
Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Jim Aukerman, and I am here on behalf of the South Kingston Land Trust. The Browning Farm is a very important parcel of property for us for many reasons. As you come up from the south on Route 1 entering town, there are five major roads that lead off from Route 1 to the sea. Moonstone Beach Road, Matunik Beach Road, Succotash Road, Jerry Brown Farm Road, and Camp Fuller Road. And the land trust over the years, together with the town and other partners, have been able to preserve many of the farms and other landscape along those roads, with the exception of Jerry Brown Farm Road, which is right in the middle. And so when the opportunity came up after Bud Browning passed away, to acquire the development rights to the Browning Farm, the land trust stepped up and started to acquire, or rather, started to proceed with the process of buying those development rights. Now, the way that these projects work are rather complex. But in a nutshell, what happens here is the land trust will ask my company, Resources Stewardship Company, to help facilitate the transaction. And the way that works is I will present an offer to the sellers, and if the offer is accepted, then the land trust will proceed to try to obtain the funding necessary for the acquisition. And that funding can come from private donations. It can come from the U.S. Department of Agriculture through the Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program. Sometimes state money's available. And sometimes, if there's a gap between what's been raised and what's necessary, the land trust will come to the town for gap funding, so-called, under the open space bond issue. And so just to give you a little background of how this transaction transpired, this has been a long process. The first offer that we made on the farm was in 2006, and the offer was $1,250,000. There was no response to that offer. Then in 2008, we offered $925,000. Again, no response. 2010, $825,000. You can see the market's going down at this point. We made other offers of $850,000 in 2010. And it wasn't until 2011 when we were finally able to get to the table with Jim O'Neill's help and meet with the administrator of the estate. The estate had gone through an executor and another administrator. They were on the third fiduciary for the estate. And we were able finally last summer to work out an agreement to purchase the farm for At the time, we really didn't know where the money was going to come from, but the agreement was contingent upon the buyer being able to obtain financing. And so we proceeded to try to find three things, really. One was a U.S. Department of Agriculture grant, which would be for half of the development rights as per appraisal. We still needed to find a farmer. We didn't know who was going to buy the farm at that point. And then we also needed to do private fundraising. So Resources Stewardship Company, as a facilitator in this process, signed the sales agreement, and then we proceeded to try to get the funding. And there are four reasons, basically, why the land trust approaches me and my company to be a facilitator in these transactions. The first is that the seller just wants to deal with one entity. In this particular transaction, there were 14 parties. And the seller, all the seller wants to do really is to know that they have an agreement, that they're going to get paid at a certain time, and they don't have to deal with where the funds are going to come from. The second reason is that the land trust cannot grant itself an easement. An easement has to come from a grantor to a grantee, and the only grantors in this case could have been either the estate itself, or a farmer, or Resources Stewardship Company. And we didn't have a farmer at the time. We didn't have a farmer until a lot later. The third reason is that the U.S. Department of Agriculture forms that they require in order for their grant applications to be approved need to be signed by what they call a producer. That is a person who is owning the property, not the land trust itself. And we asked the estate, which was the landowner at the time, to sign the forms, and one of the beneficiaries of the estate chose not to do so. So Resources Stewardship Company signed the U.S. Department of Agriculture forms. And finally, I guess the fourth reason is that much of what's done in these transactions is based on confidence and relationships and trust between the parties. And we've worked together on these transactions before. We use the same model for the acquisition of the Bayfield Farm. And I've been very fortunate over the years to have been able to develop relationships, not only with the land trust, but with town officials, the people at USDA, and others who can know that if we close this, and there were five closings in this transaction, that everything's going to be recorded in the proper order, and even if documents have to be held for a period of 10 days or however long it's necessary, that they can trust me to know that they're going to get recorded properly, and everybody's interest is going to be protected. The next thing that happened after we went and started to obtain the funding was that we ran out of time to do the transaction. We had to get several extensions on the purchase and sale agreement. And the most recent one, one of the requirements was a non-refundable deposit. We've never done that before, but we didn't want to lose the deal. So we signed an extension, we got a non-refundable deposit to the seller, and then finally, we closed the deal with borrowed money. Now, fortunately, a lot of friends of the land trust stepped up and donated a considerable amount of money. And so the amount that we've had to request from the town for the gap has been a moving target. And Joanne Richatelli, who's the land acquisition officer for the land trust, can tell you a little bit more about where those funds came from and the private donations. But suffice it to say, as we stand here tonight, we've raised about $143,525 from private contributions, which I think is terrific. And the amount that we need for the gap money is $50,000 plus acquisition costs. So what is in this for the town? Obviously, it preserves a farm, which is part of our cultural heritage here. It's a good leverage for the town, I believe, putting $50,000 in to support a farm that appraised out over a million dollars. It continues a 30-year collaboration between the town and the land trust to preserve open space, going back to 1983. And it means a business opportunity for a young man, a young entrepreneur, who's going to take over the ownership of the property and try to make a go of it. Obviously, it protects the quality of life in that part of the town, and it fulfills the voter's intent to support open space. So I'm going to ask if you have any questions, and I'll answer them, and if not, I'd like to ask Nick Papa, who's going to be purchasing the farm, to come up and tell you about his plans.
And at this point, I just would like to, Steve Alfred, if there's anything that you want to speak about at this point before we bring Nick to the mic?
Town staff has completed the full review on the application submitted by the land trust. And I think that the details that Jim has just mentioned are contained in the memorandum that I've, in the memorandum that I've provided to the council. Planning Department has completed the review. This parcel and the proposal submitted by the land trust meets the terms and conditions of the town's open space acquisition policy. It scores on the criteria at 12 points. Minimum score rates were for 11 points, so it's in excess. The funding request, I think the detail that's on page three of the memo is important for the council in following what both Jim O'Neill has said and what Jim Aukerman has said. The original purchase and sale agreement that the land trust had with Resource Stewardship was restructured, as Jim O'Neill mentioned, once the commission had been removed from consideration by the executor on Browning's Farm. That provided a reduction in the price that the land trust would be paying, as well as what Mr. Papa would be paying. The cost share on that commission decrease was shared based on what the original appraisal of the property was on a proportionate share. So when you look at it, the home site with its two acres of usable land and the 14 and a half acres of non-developable land had a appraisal value as of January 2nd of 2012 of $470,000. The development rights were estimated at 560. So that was a 46% share for the farm and a 54% share for the development rights. When the $21,250 commission was subtracted at Mr. O'Neill's request, that reduced the acquisition price for the development rights from 485 down to 473. acquisition price for the development rights from 485 down to 473, or 54% of that value. For the, I'm sorry, for the development rights, 485 down to 473, 525. And for the farm, less the development rights, down $9,775. So the arrangement that Jim Orkeman, as Resource Stewardship, took in terms of revising both purchase and sale agreements is reflected, based on the proportionate share of what the appraisal value was, to keep this even more straightforward in terms of ensuring that proper equity was maintained in terms of pricing. As far as the prices that we're seeing at this point, we're looking at the overall cost on the development rights of an estimated $493,025 that the land trust will be dealing with. Of that amount, $280,000 would come through the federal government, through USDA, the ranch and farmlands program, that's $280,000. Private funding, as Jim Orkeman just mentioned, is at $143,525. When we began dealing with the land trust on this property, the estimate was that, at best, we would see $125,000 that would go from private donations. So they're almost $20,000 above what the initial planning target had been. The remaining $50,000 would come from the town's open space land acquisition program. There's also a reference to a placeholder of $19,500 of additional municipal funding, town funding, that would come from the open space program on a reimbursement basis for costs associated with the development of the purchase and sale agreement, which would include survey work, appraisal work, or legal work associated with the development of the purchase and sales, or the actual closings on those properties. That 19-5 is something that staff recommends the council provide consideration on, in addition to the $50,000 that's requested toward the development rights acquisition. And that would provide for the entire $493,025. One thing that Jim did not mention is that the land trust, I beg your pardon, Resource Stewardship, has provided an easement for drainage purposes on a portion of the farm property. They were, Jim used the town's template, which would provide us for assistance in being able to address surface water runoff on Jerry Brown Farm within the Browning property. So that is the financials associated with it. And again, it meets all terms and conditions for the $50,000 donation from the town, and the recommendation is also to provide up to $19,500 for reimbursable costs. We would look at actual costs incurred by the land trust and provide reimbursement on an equitable basis. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council may have at this time from a staff perspective.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any questions from the town council with any presentations from Jim Orkeman or Steve Alfred before we move to Nick Papa. Carol?
I guess this might be for Jim Orkeman. Is RSC holding a deed to the whole property at this point currently?
Yes.
Okay. But the Whelies have already, the Whaley Farm, George Whaley has already purchased the strip of land, which you've already executed that deed, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this is the only thing left. Mr. Papa does not have a deed for his share at this time?
It's been closed, but it's being held in escrow until after tonight's meeting so that we can record the conservation easement before the deed. That way, he'll be taking titles subject to the easement.
So all the financing for him is all been okayed and approved and?
The money's gone already.
Okay, all right. I just know, there was so many pieces to this every inch of the way, and I'm just trying to make sure everything's good, right?
Everything's good.
Just one specific comment to make it clear. The town has no involvement with that strip of land, nor does the land trust.
Right.
The Resource Stewardship is dealing exclusively on that $75,000 acquisition and the subsequent sale of that parcel to the Whaley family.
Well, that was one of the issues, that there were so many pieces of this that had to be combined because it was all tied up in a nightmarish estate problem, probate problem. And it was, I know you did a lot of work to try and get this together, and I know Jim O'Neill worked hard on that also.
I'm glad you asked about that because this acquisition actually sets the table, in a sense, for the next farm, which is on the east side of Jerry Brown Farm Road, which is a 40-acre George and Karen Whaley Farm. And the application has been made to the U.S. Department of Agriculture for a grant on that. So we'll be back, probably the latter part of next year, I would suspect, again, with that project.
Now, with the, well, we can't even talk about that now, I don't suppose, but the Whelies, would they continue to operate the farm?
Let's hope so, yes.
That would be good. Any other questions here at the table? At this time, if we could bring back, or bring Nick Papa. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
Just so you know, Nick Papa was a former sixth-grade student of mine.
Wow.
So if you'd just like to tell us a little about what your plans are, that would be great.
Well, first, I'd like to thank everybody that brought the deal together. Jim, thanks for showing me the property so many times. And briefly, my plan is to bring the farm back into operation, once I get the house livable and the barn watertight again. But I'll be starting to construct greenhouses, once I get some excavation done, and starting to farm vegetables of greens and herbs. And once the electric fences are back intact, I'll be starting a herd of cattle over there as well. Just like to continue producing quality food.
Sounds great, Nick. Questions here at the table for Nick? Carol?
Nick, what kind of experience do you have with farming?
I've been oyster farming for the past nine years. And I've done a lot of gardening, soil farming in, with, in Jamestown. A little bit of volunteer work in Jamestown, on a big farm there.
Watson Farm?
Watson Farm.
Oh, very good. And do you have any plans for a public access, like Watson Farm? I mean, Watson Farm, Casey's Farm, those are great farms. And one of the things I would like to see as part of this acquisition and Whaley Farm down the road, along with Bayfield Farm, is some kind of public access like those farms, which not only do, like, our students here in South Kingstown, when they go to look at a farm from the high school, or any of the schools, they go to Casey's Farm or Watson's Farm. We have all these farms. This would be a great place to show them what we're actually doing here in South Kingstown, and how successful that could be. And I don't know if you're up for that challenge, but I think it might be a great thing for the town, to bring people in, to, you know, get to see what farming is like, to maybe produce more farmers in the future. Young people are where we would start, young people like yourself.
I certainly would like to be involved in the community. My oyster farm has already partaken in many field trips. Young kids from Kingston Hill Academy come down every year, and I believe they do learn quite a bit in something they certainly have never been exposed to. Once the farm's operating and safe for people to come in, it is part of my hopes to be able to?
Well, that would be great.
Give tours, field trips.
You obviously can't take this project on all alone. You must have some people helping you to take on a project this size, to start a farm.
I do have several family members that are going to be helping out, but aside from them, already got contractors lined up. Obviously, I can't do all the physical end of everything. But I've started to line up experienced farmhands as well.
Good, great. Polly?
Will you be, when you get all this done, will you be selling your products locally? Will you have a farm stand?
I would like to have a farm stand, but don't want to compete too directly with my neighbors, so I would like to work a deal out with them possibly, or do some wholesale, and possibly try to sell through, through, we have a co-op that we sell is our oysters that's a possible avenue for local sales.
Yeah. But you will sell them, that's great. Thank you.
Other questions here at the table? Carol?
I think the cooperative idea is a really good one for Nick. I think that's a great idea, to try and work with the other farmers, and, you know, maybe have a fabulous farm stand, and, you know, let people in. And you're going to have chickens, and besides vegetables, I know you said you were going to have farm animals. Are you talking about cattle?
Yep. I'm going to have approximately 10 head of cattle, and a chick, at least a small flock of chickens.
Nice.
At this time, Nick, is there, and I just heard this as a rumor, so I'm just confirming, is there any collaboration with Perry Rasso, with Matuna Coystabar, and working together there, or not?
Not, we haven't spoken of anything.
I know that, being a former teacher, when we do field trips, it's good when they, you know, go to one place, and one group goes there, and then another. So that may be, if there are field trips, going one place when you get yours up and running, that would be, you know, piggybacking on that would be great. But I'm thrilled about the public access. And Jim, the drainage easement, I know that, you know, the town has been looking for that for years, and so there's a lot of good things coming to this table, and good things for the town. So, any other questions here at the table? Carol?
I actually probably have this for Jim Orkeman again. As far as the public access, is that going to be something that's outlined somewhere, written in the deed, or?
Typically, it's not in the deed, per se. It's in what's called a management plan, which is developed after the conservation easement is recorded. The management plan's developed between the property owner and the land trust, and it specifies responsibilities for stewardship of the property. And Joanne can address that a little bit more, but the occasional public access after the farm gets restored, I would call it, will be part of the management plan.
Okay. Kathy?
Just one question about, in this kind of combination of the town, the issue that we've had there is the length of the road, and, yeah, it's not, I'm sorry, the length of the, the width of the road, I should say, and the brush. And that's been an issue about cutting back the brush, because I know sometimes it gets very narrow with the brush, and it can really scrape the sides of cars. And will we still be able to get access on both sides of the road? I know that we're not really dealing with the Whaley side of the property now. I don't know if this is a question for you, Jim, or for Steve, or both?
Or maybe John Shock, I don't know.
The arrangement on Browning Farm really will do nothing to provide for a widening of the road. If there's a widening, it's the property on that strip of land that's on the east side of Jerry Brown, where the town would need a certain width to be able to widen out the brush area. So it's not on this side of the road, it would be on that side.
Okay.
Because on the western side of the road, you've got stone wall, it's there. There's somewhat of a swale that would be available for drainage purposes, but it's not going to deal as far as us being able to do upgrades on the road. Any upgrades on the road are going to be directly with dealing with the parcel that has been acquired by the Whaley Farm.
Yeah, and I don't think I meant to talk about the width of the road. The width of the road has been the concern, just I was merely talking about more of the cutting back of the brush, because I know that had been an issue in the past about access to just cut back the brush.
Now that we have a new property owner that's involved with that land, John Shock will be having discussions as far as whether cutbacks are possible, or whether there's going to need to be a land agreement before that's done. But that's, that will be done in the immediate future.
Okay, yeah. I know that's been a big issue.
Any other questions here at the table? Back to you, Jim.
I'd like to ask Joanne, just to come forward briefly, to talk about the private contributions.
Hi, Joanne Richatelli, Land Protection Director of the South Kingstown Land Trust. When we started this fundraising, private fundraising effort, we thought 125 might be what we could pull together on this project, based on our experience with Carpenter Farm, which we thought was more visible, was going to, you know, we might not be able quite to get that far, but this has exceeded expectations by far. We have, we have 97 gifts, and that's, you know, some are husbands and wives, so it's about 140 people that have donated to this project. Gifts have ranged from $25 to $30,000. And, and so even though our purchase price decreased by about $11,000, $12,000 due to the commission situation, the reason really that we could get from a request of $100,000 to $50,000, most of that was from increased donations by mostly people in the neighborhood. There were donations from people who are friends of the land trust as well, that whenever we have a project, they will, you know, they'll try to help us out. But this was largely everybody in the neighborhood getting together. I don't know if you've driven down the road and seen the cows that the Rokoskis has put up to keep people informed about what was going on. That was very effective. People got really interested, and it really paid off. So we're thankful to everybody in the neighborhood for coming forward and making that possible, and making it possible for us to reduce our request to you all for funding here. If there are any other questions about the land trust's fundraising or other aspects, anything else I can help with, let me know.
Any questions for Joanne? Carol?
About the public access, Joanne, I think Jim said to refer those questions to you on how you're going to come up with the management plan.
Yeah, we'll write in that we will, you know, we'll try to offer guided walks to our members in cooperation with the landowner. If he wants to do school groups and other things in addition to that, that's great. We'll, I think we'll try to do things for our members, and to advertise things, you know, through our newsletter, on our website, that kind of thing, to general public.
But what are you going to, how are you going to write this up so that it has teeth? I mean, public access, you know, we already, excuse me, we already own the Bayfield Farm, well, the land trust does, and, and then, then we're talking about Whaley Farm, and we're talking, right now, we're talking about Browning Farm. I just think with public funds coming in, not only from the town, we're also talking about the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which is also a public fund, and obviously that has restrictions to maintain agriculture, which I totally agree with. But I see these farms, like, again, Casey's Farm, Watson Farm, where, you know, people aren't stomping on the grounds, they're just going into view, like a petting zoo, or maybe see the vegetables that are available to buy at a farmer's market, or they give a tour. But it's limited, it's always limited. I mean, it's not like you're in with the cattle, you know?
Right, that would not be a good idea.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm proposing. But an educational component, a component to allow people to touch and feel what, you know, the government is, their government is providing, their town and the federal government. I just think that that kind of thing is necessary, and I think it would encourage more people to be farmers, as I said to Mr. Papa. And I think that I would like to see some, more than just reassurance, but an actual document that provides for that. I think that that would be, I'm not saying every day, obviously you can't stop business and just allow people in every day, but, and I don't think that's what many of these other farms do.
Yeah, for them, I mean, the USDA doesn't, doesn't have any reference to public access in their documents. I think if you asked them, they would probably say that they would discourage it, because what they really want to do is to promote productive farming. And they don't particularly care about public access, because they're concerned about preserving soils and, you know, preserving agricultural productivity. Not that they will say that we can't do that. If we come to an agreement with the landowner that we're going to offer, you know, three or four guided tours a year, based on when it's convenient for him, and when it's, you know, then I think we're free to do that. I don't think they would restrict us from doing that in any way. But it's not a priority for them. So I think, I think we will have a follow-up conversation with Nick about what language would be appropriate to put in a management plan. I don't want to put in anything that, you know, he wouldn't be happy with. But we'll, so we'll see, you know, how many times a year we think is an appropriate target for that, and go from there. But it's, you know, we don't have any right to insist on it, and I think whatever we can come up with that works for both parties will make, you know, will make sense. And it's more than most farmers, I think, would agree to, because farmers are in the business of farming, not necessarily, you know, welcoming visitors to their, to their property. Although in this case, it looks like we'll be able to do that, which is wonderful.
Carol, are you also?
No, no. I, Jim, I want to refer back to the, I believe you gave me this, the covenant... I, Jim, I want to refer back to the, I believe you gave me this, the covenant regarding restriction of property to agricultural uses. I mean, I, I think it provides for farm tours, farm tours, work experiences, field trips, petting zoo, crop mazes and hayrides. That's in the language.
Agriturism and all that, yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's opposite of what Joanne was just saying. I, I think it's, it's not, I wouldn't-
They're all permitted uses.
But it's not, it's not like the United States Department of Agriculture prohibits or it looks, frowns on it in any way. It's right in the covenant.
Right. I think maybe the best way to, to address this would be to, when we're in the process of developing the, the management plan, to provide the council with the draft of that and get some feedback from staff and the council with respect to the, to the management plan. That's not something that we've developed yet.
No, I understand that. He's, he's got to get this farm up and running, Mr. Popper, and I understand that takes time and effort and money and a lot of investment on his part.
But I think the fact that he's had schoolchildren and other tours of his aquaculture operation and has expressed a willingness, once he gets organized there and, and secured the property, to have public tours and schoolchildren site visits and so forth is encouraging to me. And I would certainly, even though I'm not a member of the land trust board any longer, but I would certainly encourage Joanne and Nick to, in the development of the management plan and, you know, solicit input and, and provide ongoing, you know, communication with the council about that.
Well, I would certainly like that. I would like some reassurance guarantee that some of this will be, is the goal, is the goal, when, at some point in the future and, you know, not to just, I mean, obviously he's going to have a working farm there, which is exactly what we all want, but I think there's an educational component when you're talking about funds from municipalities and the United States government. I mean, it's right in their own paperwork.
Yeah.
And I think we should try to facilitate that.
I agree. I suspect that probably what we're talking about realistically is next year, though. I think he's going to need to secure-
Oh, that's fine.
And get the cattle out there and, and then, you know, he'll be in a better position to have public visits.
Well, maybe we could do that, like, set it down for a year from now, see where you're at.
Good plan.
And that would be good. But I do want reassurances that we will entertain that very seriously.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions here at the table? Mr. Orkman, did you have anyone else that wanted to present before I open it to the public?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, one, one last time here before I open it to the public. Steve, did you have any other clarifying information?
No, unless there's questions, we have provided the staff recommendation and it's now up to the council.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'm going to open the microphone to anyone that would like to speak on this issue for or against, and the microphone is all yours. Mr. Traeger.
I don't like being first, to be honest with you. I was hoping somebody else would get up first. Anyway, but I was inspired by Carol's presentation here on the public access issue to this type of project and this type of undertaking, and I think it's so easy to let something like this slide, and, and I'm not indicating that the motivation isn't there to do these things, but I also realize how difficult it is to do them. And it's almost like you really have to want to do them or else you don't get done. And I've, I just had a thought. I, I have a little place up in New Hampshire. I go up there in the wintertime and there's a farm, when I'm driving into town, that I've always said, I'm going to stop and say hello, stop and say hello. And I, I ended up doing it. I had my grandson up there and we just pulled in and, you know, they have a stand and they, they sell honey and whatever they can do and the place has been there forever. But it was just the nice thing, the way they treated us when we get in there and, oh, yeah, come on, take a look at the barn, the horses down here and, you know. You know, I mean, it's, I, I don't know how you set something like that up exactly, but I think that that has to be, if that isn't part of it, and I'm all 100% for this preservation idea, but if that isn't a part of it, then there's like a, there's a niche in my stomach about it. And I, I think that this is very, and I'm glad, Carol, I don't know, I don't know you that well, but quite a few times when I've been here, it seems like our minds are running like sink. I can't say that about too many people. I don't know if that's a compliment to you either, to be honest with you. I know my wife wouldn't think it would be. But anyway, anyway, it's true, though. It's a couple, I remember a few occasions, my memory jumps around a lot, but I do the best I can. But anyway, I really think that this is, is critical or more critical than you probably can even state it. I think it's a very important, that I think would help land trust to develop and more people would be even more actively involved in it if they knew that eventually they could actually walk on this piece of property and, you know, see something, even if it's just the, you know, kids from the city to see, just like they come down to see the fish down on my dock and they see the lopses coming in off the boats. Well, they see the animals and it's an important thing. Okay, I'm going to say one more thing, I'll sit down. I, I'm waiting, I'm looking for that three-minute sign like they have in there, yes, but I don't see it. Anyway, I'm going to say again, and I'm going to keep saying it, that I really believe this, this is a, a meeting that should be televised and I wish that this council, and I'm saying it in a public forum here where there's a lot of people here, they're here and they're here for a reason, but what if even more wanted to be here? What, are they going to be all standing around? I mean, some people would just soon turn on, they turn on the TV and watch, and I'm happen to be one of them because I'm very tired today, but I wanted to come. I would have loved to, I would have just gone home and turned, turned you on, put you right on. You'd get a good rating. Okay. Have a good day.
Thank you, Bob. Next person that would like to be addressed at the mic? I can't believe you all came here and nobody's going to speak. Do we have people that would like to come up and speak and support it? All right. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Maturam, I'm a summer resident at Matuna. I've been there for over 60 years and it has been a delight to see what South County has done to preserve the property. I have grandchildren come in from all over to visit and they love it here because of what they can get and what they can see and how they feel. It brings a comfort to them and a whole new light to their life every summer. I want you to know that about 25 years ago, I started with an old farmer and I helped to be with the State of Rhode Island DEM. We started one of the first farms to preserve the land trust. Took us over two and a half years. He began to talking to the carpenters and the different people and from there, we started a nice round robin of protecting land in the South County area. I'm quite proud to be a summer resident here, but I'm hoping that this would continue and that this application would be approved by everyone. This young man was taking his time to come tonight, put a lot of time into his, I do not know him, but to be farming at this time in his life, to put the time and effort and endurance it takes and the courage even financially and otherwise to start a project like this. I really think we should all be proud of him and we should be able, allowed to him to do it. As far as public access, all the properties really have never been denied to anybody. They can always come up to land trust, get permission to walk and do the trails, and I'm sure that that would continue and they would be able to do anything that you would like them to do with the property, making sure the liability is always protected and whoever comes on the property is covered with liability, whether it be the town or the land trust. So I think that you've done a wonderful job. I just want to thank everybody in the council and I do hope that they approve this application. I'm very proud.
Thank you, Marilyn. Now that Marilyn has broken the ice, anybody else like to speak in support?
I am Jean Magnussen and I live on Filean 3 off Jerry Brown Farm Road. I've lived there for over 20 years and I just want to say how grateful I'm going to be and my neighbors to once again, as we drive up and down that road every single day, to see cows and cattle grazing again there instead of houses going up. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Is there anyone here that is here because they're not in favor? Okay, I'm assuming that we're all here in, in support. At this time, it is a public hearing, so I'm going to come back to the table one more time before we close the public hearing. I'm going to revert back to Steve, Jim, are there any closing remarks before we close the public hearing? And any last minute questions here?
I know, I, I'm just going to say it one more time. Is there some way, Steve, that we can put this down for maybe a, a future date, a year from now or so, where we could look at the issue of public access? I, I mean, obviously, Mr. Popper would, would, and he seems to be very much on board with this, and I do very much appreciate that, Nick, I want to say that. And, but it has to be some kind of, obviously reasonable for him and reasonable access for people. Like, if it's just once a year, I mean, and nobody can make it and it's the middle of the winter, that is not reasonable access. So we need to have something that, that works out, maybe structure it for, have an educational component. Is there?
I think first I would say that the land management plan that has to go, the town will be a potty to the conservation easement. We will hold rights. So we will also be a part of the land management plan that would be developed by the land trust.
Okay.
We will see it before a final document is approved. And we will then bring it back to the council for your review.
Okay. And that's with every farm you do that, though, right, Jim? You have a land management plan or no?
Every project, whether it's a farm or not, has a management plan.
Okay.
I want to thank each of the council members for the time that you've given me to allow me to explain the project.
So at this time, we've heard from Bobby Traeger in support, Marilyn and Jean. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we close the public hearing? I just want to, you know, say that I think that, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity, preserving a piece of South Kingstown, and it's wonderful that all of these neighbors have stepped up and made donations. And I, I see this, you know, not only here with the South Kingstown Land Trust, but that's what South Kingstown's all about. I see it with charitable organizations, you know, people in need. So this is what we are here in South Kingstown. I just want to reiterate again that the drainage easement over there, you know, that, I'm thrilled about that, that that's going to be taken care of with that road and the public access piece, you know, hopefully will get worked out. So this is a great opportunity for South Kingstown. It's been supported by the people, the taxpayers here with different bonds that we've had protecting open space and I, I think it's just absolutely a delightful thing that's going to happen. So, only four of us are voting. Do we have-
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, we have one recusal, so it's four, zero, zero, one recusal. And do we have a motion?
I move approval of, let me find my, if I can, agenda.
Public hearing.
Of public hearing A, and I do want to say to all of you, I appreciate all the work you've all done. I know it was hard. And although I came on a little tough about the public access, it's just a component I'm very interested in and I know you can all put it together properly and, Nick, good luck to you. And I just wanted to know that, no offense at all, I, I just want to see, everybody see a piece of this. Anyway, with that, I make that motion to approve public hearing A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm just going to add one little-
We need to put some color to it.
Put the numbers in.
Okay, all right, let me find the paper. I've got so much paper out here.
Maybe I, you know, maybe I can help a little. We can say approve the application from the South Kingstown Land Trust for funding in accordance with the town's open space project funding policy, including $50,000 for the purchase of the development rights and the corresponding conservation easement, up to $19,500 for the costs associated with the purchase, all for the property located on Browning Farm, a portion assessed as part 75, 3 lot 44.
Where were you reading that from? Where?
I'm sorry. Magical.
I'm looking through all of this. Where is it?
That was your motion, though, Carol.
That was my motion, as a matter of fact. So, so moved.
Second it again.
We have a motion and a second. And I, I can't hold back with, you know, I know two of the people that spoke in support just have multiple, multiple years working with children. So the public access piece, I know, with Bobby being, you know, a former guidance counselor and I'm going to tell everyone, Marilyn, that you've been a school nurse and dealt with many, many children. I don't know if it was 40 years, 35 years, but anyway, so education, I know, is important to the, two of the people out of the three. I don't know Jean that spoke, but we have a motion and a second. This is wonderful. So, last minute comments? Kathy?
I've been lucky enough to have been driving by that farm probably more than any other town council person since my parents live in that general area. I have scraped my car on the brush on the side of the road. That's why I asked if, I think most of you who drive Jerry Brown Farm Road have, so I, I'm happy to see that we'll be able to maybe access it and can't cut some of the brush back. But my children have grown up watching the cows in the pasture, watching how big the puddle gets with some of the rainstorms and going out to the road and so hopefully some of the drainage easement issues could, can be addressed. So I'm happy to approve this piece of farmland and I want to give kudos to the land trust and to Joanne Richatelli, who I've always impressed with the, how you put these deals together, Joanne, and, and in the past, I think I've brought that up. We've been dealing with this for 10 years and you seem to work it out nicely and just to incorporate the people who live in the area this time. I think it was a wonderful thing and I'm, I'm very proud to be saving this piece of land. So, thank you. And thank you to the people who donated.
Thanks. Any other last minute comments? Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four, zero, zero with one recusal. Congratulations.
And I'm just going to take a couple minutes if anybody would like to leave before I go on to the next public hearing.
Don't forget to make some room for the movie, the next movie.
Thank you very much.
You don't, you don't mind the public access.
Hey, Mike. I'm good, how are you? You miss me at tennis? Yeah, I miss you.
Oh, Michael.
Jim, I must be telling you to be quiet.
Jim, it must be telling you to be quiet.
Oh, Holly, unreal. My family was eight generations of bicentennial farmers. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day, never a day off. And I remember reading the test certificates, back in Vermont, over medical examiner. Everyone said, exhausting for cause of that.
Is that right? Yes, they had, would they get up at 4:30?
Double, triple milking, depending on how late the grass grew. Haying, corn, silo, chickens, tur- I mean, wood chopping.
And then some little blight comes along.
We didn't have locusts, but we had other things. It's unbelievable.
And then it wipes out all that hard work.
Unbelievable. Yeah, they always had bacteria, strange things would always happen. Oh my goodness. Oh, awful.
But thrilled that Nicholas Parker.
It's amazing though, just over the last five years, oyster farming.
Yes, isn't it thrilling?
Just farming in general, milking, you know, roadie milk.
Yes.
All of it, just, and now, every restaurant brags, bought at, local lettuce, bought at, you know.
Within 10 miles.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Gentleman by the microphone, is he up at Biscuit City? Oh, is he on, is that?
Now we're on to the next one.
Does look a little bit familiar.
All right, what's on that about? Talk about tonight. But it's a story.
She hasn't been for years.
Not anytime.
Nine months, so.
Hello. Who are you? Jim O'Neil, Mr. Polly Eddie.
Yes, yes, we know each other. Campus URI, yes. And you live at Biscuit City, I guess? Yes, yes, yes. Well, wasn't that interesting about the land? Yeah.
See, we're giving you a choice up there, breakaway posts or your own helicopter pad and pilot.
You've been there for a long time, too. You've, 40 years, you, yeah.
Wow. Professor at the university?
Yes, he is. Oh, you did retire?
Retired.
You look too young. You look too young.
You do? What specialty? Oh, we love statistics.
But how long have you lived in that house?
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years, yeah.
Isn't that wonderful?
Well, thank you for all those years of service.
I don't really know.
Thank you.
Forty years, statistics.
Really? Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to reconvene.
But honestly, he was thrilled with it, I guess. Isn't that funny?
We have a second public hearing tonight. And this is a public informational meeting relative to providing alternative emergency access to the Biscuit City Road neighborhood. The recommendation is to use an existing 50-foot wide easement in favor of the town over Teft Hill subdivision open space which would allow for an emergency interconnection between the easterly end of White Horn Drive and High Meadow Lane. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
The issue of providing an alternative emergency access to Biscuit City Road area and the neighborhood there has been going on for a number of years. In fact, the first discussion on the need for or concern relative to a one-point access to Kingstown Road was back before the Traffic Commission in 1974. The town took up the issue again in 1994, again in 1999 when it hired a consulting engineering firm to look at three specific options for an interconnect. And then again in 2002, 2001, there was a hearing before the town council looking at the options. I think one of the main concerns in 2001 was not so much the emergency access proposal, but the concern that once an emergency access corridor were developed, that future councils may in fact try to make that a through road. I think it was clear in 2001, as it is clear today, that that is not the intention. The issue has been brought back up based on a June thunderstorm of 2011 and a letter, subsequent letter that came in from Darrell Beasley from Biscuit City Road. During that storm, there was a tree that fell across Biscuit City Road and barred public safety access and egress, as well as general public access and egress for about a three and a half hour period. And the concern expressed by Mr. Beasley at that time was if in fact there was a medical emergency, a fire, how would the town be able to respond to provide protection to the 157 homes that are resident to that neighborhood? The town council last June then requested the town's Transportation and Traffic Review Committee to again review the options and to provide a formal recommendation to the council. The Transportation Committee did do that due diligence. They reviewed the reports going back to the 1990s, as well as the beta report that was prepared in 99 and the hearings that were held in 2001, and came back with a specific recommendation. And that specific recommendation was to provide across an existing 50-foot wide easement in favor of the town from, on the Teft Hill subdivision open space for a connection between Biscuit City, between White Horn Drive and High Meadow Lane. I want to talk about the proposal. This is Kingstown Road, and the council has, I believe, each of the different maps. The highlighted in the lighter green, the planning department has highlighted all of the units that have been constructed. There's 157 houses that are resident to the developments that all have to access through Biscuit City Road. There was at one time eight different options that were looked at, many of those which were to traverse wetlands to get back out to Route 138. None of them appeared viable. There was also a proposal to connect through Potter's Wood to get us out to South Road. There was also an option that was looked at to use the open space from Teft Hill and to get their approval to be able to tie into Enterprise Terrace. Each of the, and there was a third with Ventura Circle being connected to Stonehedge. The Stonehedge, Ventura, the High Meadow Lane, and the connection into the Heritage Drive area were the three viable options that were considered. It did not appear as if any of those were viable without land acquisition, other than the connection to High Meadow Lane. So the High Meadow Lane was looked at as the preferred option. Once the Traffic and Committee reviewed and made the recommendation, I then asked to have that recommendation reviewed through the Town Planning Board. The Town Planning Board also reviewed the recommendation and concurred that if there were an interconnect, that that was a viable option. And they also proposed that there was $17,770, I believe, within the subdivision for the Blueberry Hills subdivision, Phases 1 and 2, that would be available to pay for a lion's share of that construction cost which was estimated at $20,000. This workup shows a larger picture of where the existing 50-foot right-of-way exists within the deeded property for the open space within Teft Hill. What is being proposed is the construction of two 6-foot asphalt lanes. Along with the two 6-foot lanes or 12 feet of asphalt, which would be roughly the size of a limited bike path, an area that would be three feet on either side of the lane, that would be a clear area or shoulder, and an additional one foot to get to a total clear area of 20 feet to remove the brush. We would need that just to be able to maintain the shoulder and to keep vegetation outgrowth within the travelway itself. The only intended purpose of the 12-foot lane is to provide for emergency vehicle access to and from that neighborhood should it become necessary during an emergency condition. I want to make one thing clear. If we have a tree down, it most likely will take electric wires with it. We cannot as a municipality remove wires from a tree that's downed. It can only be removed by National Grid. During major storms, National Grid establishes through a tree eyes methodology where and what trees will be cleared first, second, and third. If an area isn't a primary area that connects to a substation, it's going to be less important in terms of the clearing because they're going to have a number of crews. We've had storms where they come in as far as Canada or from Alabama. So we can't say to you that if a tree comes down, it's a simple job of cutting the tree and in three hours we can clean it up. All we can say to you is if we have a serious situation and we can't get the lines cleared for that period of time, access to that broader neighborhood will be lost. We are not interested in providing any type of through street. Any type of interconnect that we would put would be protected by bollards on either side. What would the bollards look like? I don't think, Vin, did we have any on the boards? The bollards would be similar to what you see that would block access. They could be either of a wooden structure that would be on a pipe stanchion, and the emergency vehicle would be able to push it down to be able to gain access to the area. It would then be repaired subsequent to the closure of the emergency. The existing travelway between High Meadow and White Horn Drive is a beaten path, which to a great extent is already a defined connector for pedestrians within that neighborhood. Our objective would be to really file, follow the path that currently exists, but with a 20-foot wide swatch of the vegetation removed, the 12-foot asphalt roadway installed, and then the sidewalls to be maintained. We can either use gating, or we can use bollards. Bollards would probably be less intrusive into both neighborhoods and more aesthetically pleasing. Should we receive the approval of the council tonight, we'll do final design as to the actual engineering for how the arc will be for the turning radius to ensure that any of the emergency vehicles can make it. We've dealt with the Union Fire District, Kingston Fire District, as well as our Police Department. All three are major supporters of the connection. We really don't have any other options. We've got to provide a second means of egress from that neighborhood. This appears to be the most viable method of doing that. In advance of tonight's meeting, we did provide specific notice to the property owners on both White Horn and on High Meadow, so that we would make sure that those folks would have an opportunity to express their concerns as to what impact this type of municipal activity would have on their property. I would also say to you that with council approval, I would also want to have our final plans developed and we would want to meet with the neighbors just to show you what it is that we would have as a final product. So we're looking to work with the neighborhoods and try to be as the least intrusive into your neighborhoods as possible. But I also think that there's a benefit of providing a better access than a beaten path through the woods for the pedestrians that would still be able to use this on a day-to-day basis, but certainly no vehicles. We're not looking for a public road. In fact, I had one person contact me and say, well, what they're trying to do is to get a shortcut to get to the Ryan Center. I have absolutely no idea how Biscuit City would be a shortcut to the Ryan Center, but I think that there's an awful lot of concerns out there that hopefully we can dispel and really talk about something that's there to try to protect your fellow neighbors. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions council may have or the public may have on the proposal.
Thank you Steve. Any questions here from the table for Steve? Seeing none, I'm going to, again, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the microphone for any public comment in support or not to support. So the microphone is open. Please come forward.
My name is Richard Casper. I'm the gentleman whose property directly abuts the proposed emergency access. And a lot of the things that Mr. Alfred has said are definitely true. The pursuit of an emergency access between these neighborhoods is a noble and worthy cause, but I have to disagree with his position that all the options have been explored. Specifically, we're at the confluence of three neighborhoods here. Heritage, which comes out onto South Road, Biscuit City, which comes out onto 138, and Teft Hill, which has two entrances and exits already onto South Road. I'm ambivalent personally about it. I see a lot of foot traffic and I don't mind it, I have no problem with that whatsoever. But I'm also one of the three directors of the board of the Teft Hill Farm Association, and I have to be sensitive to my constituents and what their concerns are. About 10 years ago, I think, is the last time we visited this issue, and I was able to fish out some old emails I had, which I'd like to share with you for your, if you'd like to read them later on at the conclusion of this meeting.
Give them to the town clerk. Thank you.
And these emails basically speak to the points I'd like to raise, which is the one option which I think we haven't explored is we have Teft Hill that already has two entrances and exits. We have Biscuit City that has one, and we have Heritage that has only one. I propose that the town council consider the option of interconnecting White Horn Drive and Biscuit City with Enterprise Terrace and Heritage. The distance is shorter, it will be cheaper, it will be more quickly done, and you'll kill two birds with one stone. You'll be providing two neighborhoods with the egress, with two means of egress, with an emergency egress. I don't understand why we would want to go into Teft Hill because we already have two entrances and exits and we satisfy the needs for emergency access. The other two neighborhoods don't have that. Again, the distance between White Horn Drive and Biscuit City and Enterprise Terrace and Heritage is shorter, it's also a beaten path. I'm not sure if an easement actually exists there. I know that the easement that you're talking about is the waterline easement. There's actually a waterline that connects Biscuit City with the water main at Teft Hill. And if there isn't an easement, I also have the Declaration of Covenants from when Teft Hill was instituted, signed by Mr. Dale Halburton in 1989. And this is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. In that declaration, it states that the association may dedicate and transfer to the town of to the town of South Kingston roads and easements over, under, and in the general common area for the purpose of providing access and serving additional property located outside of Teft Hill Farm." So, the possibility definite, definitely exists that we could provide an easement to the town to go the other way. Some of the residents here that are probably going to speak after me would be satisfied with that because it won't deliterously affect what their perceived property values are, and it'll serve the purposes of providing emergency access to those other two neighborhoods. And I'd just ask the town council to consider this option, which I believe has not been thoroughly considered before, and, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Richard. Any other, I think, um, Steve may address it later, any other comments from the public? Hello?
Hi. My name is Beth Curtis, and I also live in Teft Hill. Um, I guess my concern, I understand the concern. I know when the tree went down last year that there was a concern, and I said it, it does raise a, a risk, but I guess I look at it, and there's been, they keep talking about Heritage and Teft Hill, but there was another development that's off of 138 that also has only one, uh, entrance and exit, and that was only developed in the last seven years, and I would have hoped that the town council had put in some sort of an easement because I believe that goes right to the back of White Horn or Biscuit City on the opposite side. And I guess my point is that there are three different neighborhoods that only have one entrance and exits. And I, you're, you're addressing the issue with Biscuit City, but I think you also have two other neighborhoods that are on either side of this neighborhood that down the road you can have the same problem. So, I see it as short-sighted not to look at solving a problem of dealing with all three of them at the same time, or at the very least, linking two of them together so that you've solved the problem of two potential problems instead of just one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I know there were a few other people.
Hello? When you see this, you know the guys are in trouble.
(laughing).
Uh, my name is Doral Beasley. I live at two seventy-one Biscuit City Road in Kingston. As Mr. Alfred, uh, mentioned, uh, at the start of his, his comments, uh, this is going back a while. The first time I, um, wrote it, wrote a letter to the, uh, town council, Jim, was the, uh, president back in two thousand and one. We subsequently had another meeting, uh, community meeting at, uh, South Road School around two thousand and six, at which, uh, Mr. Chief Vespi was in attendance. After that, uh, meeting, I wrote him a letter, uh, also, uh, given my support to a connection. And as Mr. Alfred mentioned, this past year, when that tree on Biscuit City, uh, went down in the storm, uh, we did, we did, we were cut off for a period of time. I am also not in agreement with, uh, with the proposed connection. I think that the connection also should, uh, be between, uh, White Horn and Enterprise Terrace because of the one access for each. The main reason being one, both subdivisions are one access. Last, uh, I don't know, I think, no, last winter, there was a, uh, a huge tree in the front of a house on, on the first part of Heritage, as you come in off of South Road that went down. Luckily, it, I think most of it went down on the, the property owner's property, but if that tree had gone, uh, another way, it would have blocked that. It was a very big tree, it would have blocked that for, uh, some period of time and probably taken down the power lines with it, as Mr. Alfred has mentioned. We also have the issue in Heritage, um, of trees in Biscuit City, I mean, trees, in, in trees and powder wood are, especially the pine, a lot of, some of the pines and the ash trees were having the boring beetle problems. We've lost a huge portion of our white pines in, in, uh, in powder wood over the last fifteen years or so. Um, so, we see a lot of this degradation of our larger trees. Uh, so, having a portion of powder wood on the nor, on the northern, uh, side of, of, uh, Heritage Road, coming off of South Road, you always have that possibility also. Uh, so, I would like, I think that, to me, is, is the best option, is to link those two neighborhoods. Now, I totally disagree with, with, uh, the Teft Hill people's argument about, you have, uh, I think at least seven cul-de-sac off your two main roads in your, in your subdivision, any of which, if a tree went across, uh, the road entering down into your cul-de-sac, that, all those people down there would be blocked off too. So, um, I would like to see, I, I, I'd like to see a, a single lane material handling the emergency traffic, uh, but keep it as rural as possible. If the bollards were used, would that be, would you, like, the center bollard be removable, and that would make, make it so that the, the, uh, emergency vehicles would go through there, or, or how does that work?
Because, like, the, the design hasn't been completed, it would really be, uh, it could be, you know, two, uh, two holes and both be knocked down. Some of them are strength fed, uh, so they, uh, they would knock down and they could come back up, like you said. Or they would just be knocked down and replaced. If you look at the, uh, the bollards would be replaced at, uh, various locations, whether it's, uh, it's along the bike path that, uh, the steering wheel over the top, or, you know, we've had, had, uh, several of these versions. We can put in any number of, uh, types of, uh, 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 full, full sun, that's, that's a good way.
Um, yeah, I think the, uh, my wife and I walk a lot around the neighborhood, and, um, we've heard some rumblings also from the Heritage crew that, that they would be opposed to having anything being connected to them, but, um, I think it would be short-sighted if, if, if they decided to be against us because I think, to me, it's, it helps both neighborhoods out. I don't think that we need to be connected to Teft Hill, although I would love to see a narrow, maybe, uh, six-foot bike path connecting the two neighborhoods. When, we did a, um, back in the late nineties, we had this, like, uh, the Village inventory, and we talked about green, greenways, uh, there was a greenway, um, effort that we had, uh, that we talked about in town, and any time you can connect neighborhoods with a bike, with a bike path, or something that would be able to, people to, to ride their bikes on, or, uh, parents with the strollers for their children, that would keep their kids off of the major thoroughfares, which in this case is South Road, I think is, is a, is a win for, it was a win-win. So, um, I guess that's about it.
Thank you, Doral.
May I speak again?
Let me just make sure, Richard, that, um, and there's not anyone else that would like to speak for the first time.
Hi, my name is Joan Lawson. I live on the easterly end of Biscuit, of, uh, White Horn Drive, so I'm impacted either way. I think it makes sense to try and go Heritage just for the cost and, um, involved, but either way, I'm in favor of having the access, and it's going to be right in front of me. I do have a couple of questions, though. You mentioned a shoulder. Now, would motor, motorcycles have access to that shoulder, or does the fence cover the twenty feet?
We're not proposing any type of vehicle access other than bicycles.
I know.
And we-
That doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
I guess I, my answer to you is, is the same issue, that we would have to patrol it just as we do the bike path.
And what is that?
And I would say that based on the width of what's there now, somebody who was really foolish could fit through there with a motorcycle today.
And ATVs do come through. Uh, that's what my concern is. There are six houses on our little side street, and you should come visit us in the fall when URI comes back to session. Students seeking access, a quick access to you, um, to Wakefield. Believe me, we don't get many cars, but in September, we get a lot.
And you tell them you can't get there from here.
Well, they look and go, even though there is a dead-end sign at, at the intersection, they still come down. My second question has to do with snow removal. Currently, the snow plow comes right down White Horn Drive and pushes everything to the end of the road there, including over access to our current pathway. I guess I have a concern about our own driveway, which is right there too. I don't know where you're going to put all the snow, if we ever get any of it.
Hopefully not.
My second question having to do-
Wait a minute, that was the second one.
Having to do with snow.
Ed, you gotta help me out over here.
Having to do with snow is, do you plan on, uh, plowing?
It would have to be, yes.
And that would be just on, on a regular basis?
I think it would be done with major storms. Most of the, uh, public safety vehicles would be able to traverse with four-wheel drive if there was snow that was there. In a major case, we would have to look at it.
Okay. Would you just consider the snow deposit when you bring up these plans?
I think Public Works would have to take a look at that.
Okay.
They'd, they'd have to figure out what they were going to do differently. But I'll, I'll be truthful with you, one of the big problems that we have with snow plowing is cul-de-sacs, and where do you stick the snow, particularly if there's three driveways coming off that cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm.
Because no matter where we put it, uh, it, it's not good.
Right. Right. Well, thank you for your time.
My name is Eleanor Dane. I've been involved in this since nineteen seventy-seven, from way back. I wanted to make this comment. I know it is difficult to bridge the two wetlands to make a parallel road to Biscuit City, but when you look at- Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I forgot, yes, yes. I can do this too. Um, it's, I know it is a major problem to talk about bridging the two wetlands to get up to, to make a parallel road to Biscuit City to get up to 138 or someplace in that area. My thoughts are this. The area of White Horn Drive extension, uh, with about at least twenty houses in there now and growing, you talked about the Blueberry Hills development, eventually, something is going to have to be done. At the same time, if a tree falls down across the western end of White Horn Drive, those people are stuck, and there, again, is a, a good, a substantial number of houses and growing. I wonder if it doesn't make sense to consider that major, uh, connection back up to 138, which would solve all the problems in this area, except for Heritage, which would still have the one access. But when you think of the cutoff by powder wood, people in the north, people in the south could not get through. If a tree falls down anywhere, even across White Horn Drive, that group of people is also stuck. So, my, my thought is, since we know that this is going to be a developed area eventually, maybe an overall plan should be looked at rather than just a temporary, um, access. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. I think, I think, has everyone spoken that wants to speak for the first time because they're going to bring back Richard? Oh, there we go. Richard.
My name is Ed Lawson. Uh, Steve, uh, I just have a few comments. I've been involved with, uh, Doral, I guess, since I met with, uh, the Biscuit City Association, I don't know, Lo, many years ago, and we met with, uh, Chief Vespi in his office to go over this years ago. I've now reached the age where this last year, I've had the emergency at my house three times, transported me twice. Fortunately, uh, Biscuit City Road has been open, uh, but it was closed as, as we said with the storm last year. The other end of Biscuit City was also closed, um, with a tree at, uh, just beyond Higgins and, uh, well, Helm and Nichols. So, that whole north end of Biscuit City, White Horn, was all closed in, um, and people were trying to get out. We ended up getting, uh, chainsaws and cutting the trees down ourselves to get back out. No electricity was lost. Um, but, living at that end of, uh, White Horn Drive, I've been in favor of this forever. Back when Shillings, when Enterprise was built, that road was supposed to go through. Now, we have the right-of-way there already, and I think we should use the right-of-way and save the town the money. If the Teft Hill Association can come forward and grant another right-of-way, that opens another option to the town, but if that isn't forthcoming, let's get it done. It's been too long.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, I'm going to bring back Richard for second-time speakers.
First, I want to apologize to Dale again. Sorry. Steve, do we have, uh, Mr. Alfred, do we have a count on the number of homes that are in Heritage?
You haven't, Vin?
I'm just thinking that there's two, two hundred and nineteen homes in Teft Hill, and you mentioned one fifty-seven in Biscuit City. I'm just going to guess that there's probably more homes in Heritage and Biscuit City combined than, than there are in Teft Hill, just, just for your consideration. Um, and the only other thing I want to say, I would just want to reiterate that on behalf of the association, um, I, I, I will work diligently to provide any necessary easements, um, in accordance with our bylaws, to afford the town, um, and finally bring to finality a means of, uh, an emergency access road between Heritage and, um, Biscuit City, if, uh, that's what the council wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any more speakers? Um, I have, um, one woman that needed to leave. Her name, and she left me with a comment, so I'm just going to read it. Um, it is from Ian Vincent, and she is in favor of this emergency access and would also welcome any other connecting neighborhoods with bicycle, bicycle paths, um, similar to what Doral had mentioned. So, that was from Ian Vincent.
Hi, my name is Rob Els. I'm a resident of High Meadow Lane, and the proposed access for the Teft Hill side would dump right on my front door. To reiterate the prior speaker's comments, um, I've lived there fourteen years, and the traffic that goes through there now is unbelievable- And the traffic that goes through there now is unbelievable. If you widen it to 20 feet, it'll be incredible. Sending a planner out like was there last Thursday for 20 minutes, snapping a couple of pictures in preparation for this meeting, and seeing the bucolic nature of it doesn't do it justice. I've worked out of my house since 1999. I see it and live it every day. You open it up, widen up, pave it, it's going to be a freeway. It already is, but it's going to get worse. To reiterate your comment a minute ago about snow removal, where does that go? Does that get dumped onto High Meadow Lane, in front of my house, in front of, it's already incredibly difficult to get rid of the snow. It seems like it's a foregone conclusion, just my opinion. But from a design standpoint, you've got existing stone walls there that have to be removed and would have to be redesigned. Does the pavement go all the way down to the street, to the, across the sidewalk and all the way right down to High Meadow Lane?
Yes, it would.
Or does it stay up beyond where the gas line is now, beyond those stone walls? And do the bollards get, you know, hidden by vegetation? Because you've got to remember, it's, it's wide open there now, from High Meadow Lane to where it kind of is overgrown now is a good 50 feet. So are you going to put fencing on both sides for your 50-foot easement? Because several of my neighbors, 13 years ago, we opened up that side of the open space in Teft Hill to avoid, to accommodate the influx of traffic from White Horn and Heritage because their dogs were defecating incessantly on all of our neighborhood, on all of our front lawns. So we gave them a nice area to, you know, utilize our neighborhood instead of theirs, as it is. So you have to consider, you know, how is it aesthetically going to look? And I think it would look horrible and further deteriorating our already depressed real estate values here. So, you know, hopefully it's, you look at the other alternatives, there are other alternatives. We can all sit here all day and say, I, I can name probably 12 other subdivisions that have the same problem even worse. Go down the street to Deer Trail, they got the same issue. Okay? A tree can fall anywhere. I just hope this isn't a knee-jerk reaction to one specific event that happened a year ago when the cities had, or the towns had access to this issue since 1989. Okay? 23 years later, I hope this just isn't a knee-jerk reaction.
Thank you, Rob. I'm going to open it to see if there's anyone else before I turn it back over to Steve Alfred. There any last-minute comments? We'll do this young man and then Bobby, and then we'll go back to Dar- no, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joel Kerchik. I live on High Meadow Lane. I guess my comment would be that I would hope that the process, and I agree with the process, that there should be an additional access, really doesn't get in the way of common sense. I think this board is going to find itself back here again in dealing with this issue with other neighborhoods, as prior speakers have mentioned. I just think that, you know, let's look at it from a common sense perspective. It is true, I think you need another emergency access, or you need access. If this is the end alternative, then to go with what Carol said earlier, then there's, there needs to be real strong teeth into this. That really prohibits, you know, any type of vehicle use or, and 20 feet, by the way, would be this row of seats in distance. That is not a small space. That's a very large space. And I do believe that the salient point here is that you do have home values that could eventual, could be affected by this, minimally, but could be affected by this. And I think that many of these homes on that side of the neighborhood, the first section of Teft Hill, were actually purchased with the premise and paid more for that land because of it being landlocked by common land. My thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Trager.
That's why I'm here. Anyway, I, it's interesting to me, this, this isn't become, you know, you're sitting, you're listening, and then you, you wonder what's going on, and all of a sudden, things come out. And, and it is true that a lot of people want to live in areas where there's only one access. They call them gated communities. You know, I, I don't know, I have no problem with this, although I can understand why if somebody was living on wherever this access is going to come in and go out, that I could understand where they, they, and they already know if they live there. I've heard a couple of people comment on it, that there's already a lot of kind of traffic there anyway. I wonder, if it's a matter of emergency access, why does it have to be paved? That's one thing I would ask. I would say, why couldn't it stay almost like it is, but just make sure it's wide enough for a truck to go through? Or, or an ambulance, or a fire truck, or a police, whatever it is. I, I don't know why, you know, sometimes we like to overdo things. Like, they were going to do Succotash Road a few, quite a few years ago, and they were all ready to tear Succotash Road to pieces, put big, you know, things on the sides and everything, you know? And I remember going to that meeting, and I think the same roads there now that they repaved, and it's, it's not great, but it's lasted, I don't know, could you know how many years? I mean, it's been eight years, right? Or something like that, maybe longer than that? You know, it's, it's complicated stuff. But I, I, I think a lot of good comments have been made here. And the last few comments, I, I think this might be worth thinking a little bit more about. I, I don't know.
Thank you, Bob. Dural, I just have, I'm going to come back to you in a minute, Dural. Please. No, no.
Hi, my name is, my name is Chris Seacon. I live at 17 Paddock Court. I've only been there just about three years. I hear a lot of good points on both sides. I have two young kids, and my concern is the traffic, right? You're going to add more traffic to the area. I try to take weekend strolls with my kids around that neighborhood, you know, I walk with Joel's dog, and, you know, it's, it's a really nice neighborhood, and, and I would be kind of upset if you put a big freeway through there that would add more traffic to that area. Current concerns with my kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Dural.
One of the issues on Biscuit City Road is, like, from one, all the, all the way from 138 on that straight stretch, all the, all the way down to the end, so it's like eight tenths of a mile, is you have all these big trees on both sides of the road, and a lot of them are suspect. You get down there now, you have locusts, you have trees that are, been killed off by poison ivy and other types of vines. Probably not a couple of years, every couple of years, I, I call, or if I see Mr. Wallace around, I'll mention to him that there's a, we got a tree that's suspect. One was, looks like it was going to topple over near where Margaret Hunt's house was. So one of the things that, that the town could do is have the tree warden go down that street and take all the suspect trees out. I've mentioned that before. But as far as, my last comment is, if, if you did make the connection to, to a Teft Hill, I, I can guarantee you that the people living in Teft Hill and their kids would use that access to ride their bikes into Kingston, down to URI, to the ball fields, wherever, because that's what kids do, and, and they'd love it.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public before we go back to Steve Alfred? Steve, it's all yours.
I agree with everybody.
That's why you stayed here so long, Steve.
The, the problem that we have is that, you know, we could look at Enterprise Drive, and we could have the same hearing that we had tonight with the same presentation that I made on Heritage Drive. And we would end up probably with the same comments about not putting it through Heritage Drive. We could go back to the Teft Hill Association and ask them for an amendment on the open space. Right now, we have the legal right for construction of a road across the right-of-way property without, and we don't have that approval on Enterprise Drive. I'm sure, as Mr. Taskers indicated, that if we could keep those pedestrians out of their neighborhood and send them to Enterprise Drive, that they would give us that access. But we're still back to the same point. I think in a perfect world, I would have loved to have seen the connection go in both directions, so that you'd have an interconnect of all three neighborhoods. Do I think that this is something that's urgently necessary? Well, it's been discussed now for, as we've talked about, over 20 years. And I think that there are a great deal of places where there could be trees that are down and we'd have access issues. On smaller subdivisions, we're not overly concerned because by foot, you're going to be able to deal with the problem. And certainly, if we had a major incident, we would try to move or go through somebody's front lawn to be able to get access. But the fact still remains that we should be providing this type of an access. Whether we do it to Enterprise Drive, whether we do it to White Horn, to, to High Meadow, it's, it's something that needs to be done. And whichever neighborhood is going to be the receiving area is going to be opposed to it. The gentleman that spoke in saying that it's going to increase traffic in the area, there's no traffic to be generated. The pedestrian traffic already exists there. You know, as Bob says, well, gee, do you need to pave it? Well, if we don't do a gravel surface that is, is then maintained with some type of a paver system, I can't guarantee access through that area without some serious maintenance on a year-to-year basis. So I think that the reason it's 12 feet wide is because you need to be able to get a full-size public safety vehicle, a fire truck, or a EMS rig through that, that area. It's 12 feet that would be paved or gravel, and the rest of it is, is the cutback that's necessary to keep the vegetation out of the area. Where we would place the bollards on High Meadow would be at the fence, at, at the tree line itself. How John would design, what would be in that grass area from the tree line to the road itself, that hasn't been developed. But you would want to have the bollards set back or a fence set back because you would like to use the natural vegetation as a means of preventing vehicular access, illegal as it would be, into that area. So Chief Vesper is dealing with the emergency situation that we had. He would have been here with me tonight on the presentation, and certainly has expressed strong sentiment that we need to do something just because there is such a large neighborhood that we're dealing with that, that could in fact be disenfranchised from public service. So I, I can't say to you I disagree that it could go to Enterprise. I think it, you know, it could go both to Enterprise and to High Meadow. But I'm telling to you that we can have the same public hearing two weeks from now, and you're going to have a different set of faces with the same set of complaints. And the problem will continue to persist. And that's exactly what took place in, in 19, 1994, 1991, and 1999. So we can talk about it and just put off the inevitable. I'm just hopeful that we don't end up finally addressing the issue after we've had a serious incident where there's been loss of life or, or property that's been jeopardized. My recommendation still remains, as the public safety concerns are here, that the connection be approved through, through White Horn and High Meadow. And I would say that if the association wants to continue to provide us with a change for Enterprise Drive, we would look at a future interconnect there, so we would have all three neighbors, neighborhoods protected. I'm not trying to pick favorites. I'm looking at the, the fact that we do have the authorization to be able to make that interconnect at this point through, through Teft Hill. I'd be glad to answer any other questions council may have.
Carol?
Steve, can you show me on the map where this other location is? Enterprise and Heritage, I think they were saying, or if I got the wrong street.
This is all of the open space property. Okay? This is where the town has the legal right to.
And that's Teft Hill to White-
This is Teft Hill to the High-
High-
This would, this would be a connection which would go over the same open space property, but would end up at this cul-de-sac within the Heritage Drive area, which is Enterprise Drive, Enterprise Terrace.
And that would give an, an entrance and exit to both those communities if you went that way?
Yeah. Well, the Enterprise Drive and Heritage, you've got probably about 25 houses that are served by one access heritage. What the folks are saying here tonight is, you could connect two neighborhoods that have one point of access by simply getting the approval from the Teft Hill Association to be able to use their open space as a connection to this cul-de-sac here. And what I'm saying to you is that if we have that meeting next meeting, or two meetings from now, I believe that you will have several people that will feel adversely impacted, just as we have folks here tonight, that, that deal the same way. And my presentation, I'm saying to you, you could connect all three by having this here and this going out here at the same time. But again, trees are going to fall any place in town, and you're certainly not going to remove enough trees on the town right of way to prevent this from being a safety issue. But I think that the town's more wedded to trees than it is to dealing with the right, rights of way, because that's the type of community that we are. I mean, we, we appreciate the, the beauty of, of the vegetation. We certainly can't knock it out.
Is there any way we could do, like, instead of pavement, like a cobblestone or something like we did with the walkways on Main Street? Would, maybe it'd be more aesthetically appealing to everyone?
There's different surface applications that could be used. What could be used is, is a paver block, which is filled with a sand, gravel material that would provide a substantial surface for the weight of the heavy vehicles that would potentially use it. Certainly, that would be something that could add to the cost, cost as well. And if you put that type of a paver system in, you may be preventing some of the pedestrian or the vehicle, the bicycle accessibility through that right-of-way, because you're not going to have as, as ridable a surface. So there's pluses and minuses, and minuses to each way that you could go on it, Carol.
Thanks.
Kathy?
Steve, I know we have a price of the connection to High Meadow. Is there a price to go to Enterprise? Has that been looked at?
About the same thing, because each, each of the distances around 300 feet, I believe, is that what you got, Vinnie, about 300 feet? 400 for, for the, for the second one? So it, probably in the, you know, 25 to $30,000 range there. I'm not so sure, it's not cost that's driving it, it really was the availability of the easement.
I just wanted to kind of get a feel for it. And if cost wasn't driving it, too, could the Blue, Blueberry Hill money that we were using to, could that also be swung the other way, too?
Yeah, that, that, that money would be available regardless of which way we went.
Okay.
The only thing the planning board was interested in is using those meetings to, using that funding as a means of dealing with the single access point. I mean, you know, we, we could look at, at going to a paver surface. We could look at, you know, the, going to Enterprise Drive. But again, if you're going, going to go to Enterprise, you need an additional meeting because you're going to need the input of that neighborhood as well.
I understand that. And it just, from hearing from the group of people, even from the people from Biscuit City, who are also recommending Enterprise. So it's, when you have two of the neighborhoods also, we're, we're, White, White Horn is also asking for Enterprise. I know you probably, you get the same people who complain that they don't want it either. I understand that. But, I mean, it just seems that they're, it's pointing in that particular direction and opening up a double access. So that's why you have to ask, you know, what the pricing of it, and maybe we could look into the pavers, because wherever- And maybe we could look into the pavers because wherever it goes, it might not, it might be a little bit bumpy for the bike bicycles. But it's certainly a more aesthetic-looking, you know, we've done it in the crosswalks and it's, it might be a little bit bumpy, but it's not that. That's like a press concrete. I don't know if we could do something like that.
I think that the reason, what we haven't looked at is a final design because we don't have a final right-of-way. If we're going to go to Enterprise or if we're going to go to High Meadow, we need direction on which way we would go. Then I'll commission the engineering to be done and look at those cost options.
Other comments here at the table? Jim?
Steve, what kind of weight is needed for a vehicle? Can a 6,000-pound pickup truck knock those ballots down?
I think, I can't address that, Jim. I think that what we would look at is the standards that the planning board uses when they have the emergency access that's got a vegetated surface on it. Because it's not the 6,000-pound truck. It's really the size of a full-size pump, a fire truck that you would want to be able to have carrying capacity on. But I'm not sure what that would be. Possibly John could address that for you.
I guess, I guess I don't understand why we have to have it as wide as you're talking about. I really, I agree with Bob Traeger. I just would like to believe that 10 and 12 feet is more than enough, maybe 10 feet. And something that would simulate kind of a gravel road, hard-packed road, obviously, so you wouldn't get stuck in thaws, mud, and whatnot. But I just don't understand the, because the width you're asking for is without question going to create new, some kind of new traffic. It's a tough one. We're not going to please anyone here. And I also guess that Biscuit City, I can understand, as far as I'm concerned, if I lived in Teft Hill, Heritage downhill there towards URI is where frankly, most of the dog walking and traffic would go and bicycling. Kind of tough to go uphill and wide of South Road that way. It just seems that that would be the flow towards the university. But I just, this is much too wide for me to handle here with what should be a rescue vehicle or a fire truck.
I think that the controlling tenant there, Jim, would be what the width of the largest vehicles we would need. Largest vehicles we would need would be the emergency rescue EMS vehicle or the, if we could reduce the size of it, I'd be glad to look at reducing that width. But I doubt that you're going to be able to get that to less than a 12-foot width.
All set, Jim?
Yeah.
Carol?
But Steve, you're asking for 20 feet, right? 12 feet of pavement and then some extra on the side?
You've got to have the extra on the side to cut back because if you're going to, you're going to end up with another Jerry Brown farm if you don't have the cutback on the brush on both sides.
But we're only using this rarely, if ever. This isn't going to be a regular, I mean, right now, we're sitting here, we're talking about one incident that happened what a year ago. And so this is rarely going to be used if you can keep the sides trimmed and just get that rare vehicle through in an emergency. We're not going to use this as a regular street.
If I can get the engineering done with less of a width, I will attempt to do that. The controlling factors will be the width of the vehicle sizes that I need to get through there, as well as I've got to have some cutback from the road surface itself on the vegetation. At this point, you're talking about a clear area, just like as you have on a bike path. You've got grass that's a three-foot strip alongside of the paved surface on the bike path to provide both the space to keep the overgrowth into the path itself. Can we reduce that in size if we can attempt to do that and get the engineering done? I'll be glad to attempt to do that with the final design. What I need is the corridor to be able to do the design because we don't want this to be intrusive into the neighborhoods as well. But we also have to make sure that it has a practical application if it's going to be installed.
How wide is the bike path, Steve? How wide is the paved area?
Six and six is the same, be the same size.
So we're talking the same-sized paved area as the bike path? Because I have seen police car around the bike path, so I know they can get down there. And then you're wanting four feet on either side?
Yeah, three feet for what you would call a grass shoulder and then a foot back from that, just as far as vegetation.
And would we be doing any plantings or anything to make this be more appealing for the people who live nearby or fencing or anything like that?
That was not considered because you're talking about taking out a wooded area. You're going to have, you're still going to have the same growth on either side of the pathway itself.
It would seem that you could probably reduce it at least to the three feet on each side like the bike path has, right? Is that what you just said? It's three feet versus the four that we're looking for here?
Yeah, we can look at getting it down as small as possible.
Yeah.
Again, as long as we can get the vehicle in and out of there.
Kathy?
And just refresh me again on Ventura Circle. It's a 50-foot easement here too. It doesn't seem as residential as the other area. What was the issue again? Your back was kind of turned towards me. The issue with Ventura?
I'm sorry, what was the issue?
What was the issue with Ventura? Is there an issue? Was there a wetlands issue with Ventura?
No, there's no, there's no issue. We're getting it there. What it is, is that currently there is no approved easement from the Teft Association to be able to allow for that layout. The layout that we're looking at isn't, was approved as a condition of the open space dedication when, with the subdivision, and it follows the waterline that was installed into the subdivision.
No, no.
Excuse me, Doral?
Ventura, the other cul-de-sac off of Heritage?
Yes, Ventura's on the other side.
If you're going to speak, if you could come to the mic or, you know, do you have a question for Vin Mori?
I thought Ventura was the other cul-de-sac off of Heritage.
I'm not sure what your question was.
It's not related to the open space. Ventura Circle, there's an intervening property that would have to be an acquisition or an easement or land from a particular property.
Well, you were asking about Ventura. I'm sorry, I thought you were still dealing with.
I knew there was something. That's what I'm saying. All right, this seems a little easy.
There's a private property there that would require an easement or a condemnation. And when we looked at that back in the 90s, it was not one that we thought would be a viable solution.
Thank you. Any other questions here at the table? Jim?
Yes, Steve, who are the first responders if a tree went down the first half-mile on Biscuit City? Is it coming from Kingston or is it coming from West Kingston? Who would be the first one with an ambulance there? And what would they use now? Or if there was really an issue in an emergency, what would be their secondary access?
Well, EMS would be just out of the Public Safety Building at Curtis Corner in 108.
Right, so they'd go up that way, so Kingston isn't closer.
Right. I mean, they would either, I would assume that their way of travel would be to Biscuit City Road via 108 and 138 if they were going in. Obviously, to Teft Hill, they take South Road in. But that would be the first responder for emergency rescue services. On fire, fire would be with the Kingston Fire District would be primary for the Biscuit City area, and that would be out of the Kingston Station. Backup obviously would be either through any of the stations with the Union Fire District.
Have they ever used a secondary path rather than?
I'm not aware that they have. I'm not aware that they have.
Maybe a few of the drivers might help us out. Okay, thank you.
Doral, did you want to?
Actually, when that tree fell down last year, they opened the gates on both sides of Potter Wood and an emergency vehicle came through the woods there.
Was it an EMS truck, Doral? What kind of?
I'm not sure. I think it may have been some vehicle they were bringing in to help clear the, maybe it was an electric company truck or something. I'm not sure what it was. But they did because a bunch of branches got knocked down.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a Daryl.
Carol?
Daryl, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask you a question if you could come back up. You sent the letter last year anyway, right? And I believe you just said you sent another letter even many years ago. Or is that, is this the only one?
Yeah, there's been three. 2001, 2006, 2011. It's a five-year plan.
And I mean, you don't sound very supportive of the plan that's on the table tonight. What would you, I'm not clear as to what plan you would support.
I think that, I think Heritage and Biscuit City should be connected because they're both one-access, they're both one-access subdivisions in. Yeah, there are going to be some people from Heritage who are going to come here and probably complain, but in reality, they're only helping themselves if they get that connection. And it keeps the people in Teft Hill happy because they don't have to worry about it. And I don't know, it just seemed like a win-win to me.
And now, if all you, if this plan went through, are you against this plan? Are you speaking out against it?
Well, I don't see why we're making people in Teft Hill angry at us for no reason. We don't need to be connected to Teft Hill. I don't think that's the right way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions here from the table?
Actually, I just saw one other thing. When you, if you go, if you walk that, those two paths, if you come out of Whitehorn and go to the right towards Teft Hill, you're walking through some fairly, very, very dense both sides of that path, especially on the west side, dense brush and stuff. When you go the other way, it's a lot lighter because after maybe 100, 150 feet, you're going to go underneath the power line easement. And then you come to the cul-de-sac, so, and you're going to go through a stone wall and it hits the cul-de-sac. But there's only, there's one house on the left there. That one house will know that there's a connection. The other house over there to the right, they're not even going to know that connection exists. It's going to be a lot less intrusive to that neighborhood if it gets connected to that group.
Kathy?
I have to agree with Doral when I look at this because in the overall visual that we have, it really is the end of a cul-de-sac. And he's right, there's really one house that's going to know that it's there. I mean, there are going to probably be people who are going to be upset, but I'm willing to go and have another hearing and see what they have to say with Enterprise. Obviously, one is going to be a loser. Somebody's going to be unhappy here. But I say we pull in the other road and give them the same due diligence and it's, if you look at the aerial, if you want to pass it down, I don't know if everybody has that one with them. It really is, and this is not a road. And like Steve was saying, the gentleman said that he's worried it's going to affect the traffic. We're hoping you're never going to ever see anything coming off of this. You know, God willing, that there won't be, you know, a fire or, you know, somebody for a rescue. And when you look at the Teft Hill cul-de-sac and you have seven homes plus, you know, the ones across the street from it, you're impacting 11 or 12 homes kind of directly where it's really one. On the other, Enterprise will pull them in. They might not be happy with it. Somebody's going to have to lose on this. But I wasn't on the council when this last was argued. I was, I live in, for full disclosure, I live in Teft Hill. I don't live in that corner of Teft Hill. I live in the absolute opposite corner of Teft Hill. But just overviewing the map and then hearing, you know, Doral, who wrote the letter and started this whole process, you know, suggesting Enterprise, I think that it would benefit this council to move on, do another public hearing, and invite the people from Enterprise there and see what they have to say.
Jim?
Well, the numbers may dictate this. We're talking 200-plus homes, one area, 157, and maybe somewhere between, what, Doral, 25, 40 homes? I mean, I hate to look at it that way, but if the costs are the same, maybe we should hear, as Kathy said, from that other group.
And they get secondary exit themselves.
Excuse me, but Teft Hill doesn't need.
Wait a minute, Beth, Beth, could you just wait a minute? I want to finish this conversation here.
Just thinking aloud with the numbers, that's all.
Okay. Kathy, did you want to respond back too?
I lost his train of thought on that one. I'm sorry. Jim, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
He was actually agreeing with you.
Oh, I thought he was. I thought he was.
She can't believe it.
I'm saying it gives double, it does give double access to two different areas because, as you say, a tree could go down anywhere. If a tree falls in the woods, it won't go there. But it could fall on Enterprise and I just see less of an impact on that corner of the thing. And a decision's going to have to be made. It's going to be this council, and I think it's, we have to do the due diligence.
Excuse me.
Okay, Beth.
I must have misunderstood, Jim. I thought he was thinking that the impact on the numbers was combining, connecting Teft Hill to Biscuit City was going to service a larger number of homes, but Teft Hill has multiple.
No, I know. That's, I was trying to impact the fewest homes.
Steve.
Annoying the fewer people.
Steve.
Annoying the fewer people is all the police.
You know, if the council wishes to entertain the Enterprise Drive interconnect, the only thing I would suggest is that in advance of that, we receive the easement from Teft Hill Association for that open space to be able to make the connection. If they're willing to provide us with that, then at that point, we could notice another hearing and provide that neighborhood with an opportunity to express what their concerns are. Again, from the public safety perspective, it's not an issue of taking it to one or the other. It's a question of getting one completed. At this time, we don't have the legal right to be able to go to Enterprise unless that Board of Directors provides us with that easement. If they're prepared to do that, then I would have the solicitor draft the necessary easement. If they're willing to prepare that, then at that point, I could, you know, propose the review of that, that interconnect rather than this. Again, all we're looking to do is to make an interconnect. We don't have a legal right to do it the way that the folks here are suggesting it could be done. If we have that, then at least we could entertain the proposal with that neighborhood. But it's fruitless to do it now without the authority.
All right. Can I just explain the process of a public hearing? And I really have stretched the rules and I think it's been good. But a public hearing is supposed to be, you know, a presentation, and then we open it to any questions here at the town council table, and then we open it to any questions from the public, and then it usually comes back to the town council table. So if, you can just keep that thought in mind. I think the dialogue has been good, and you people live there and to bring, so, but I mean, I do need to at some point pull it back to the format of a public hearing. So I do have one question, Steve, before, if we're looking at posting and advertising for another public hearing, this public hearing, would we keep open and continue?
This is a, an informational hearing, so it's not one that a formal decision has to be made. You could make, you could have made the decision weeks ago to simply say yes, put the interconnect through. The council provided this informational hearing as a courtesy to the neighborhoods to be able to get the public input. So you could close this public hearing and take under advisement the recommendation that had been made. You could hold a second meeting with that other neighborhood and then from that point, come up with a final decision. It's not, you're not putting anything in other than giving us policy direction on how to proceed. So you don't really need to keep this hearing open. You would keep the record for this meeting and consider it when you, after you've had that second meeting on Enterprise Terrace.
Right. What my fear is, is that once we have a public hearing and people come forward with Enterprise, that the, you know, some of the people here may be able to also put in other valuable information. And this has been a very valuable dialogue back and forth. I want to make sure that the people here know that. So that's my only fear in, you know, closing this rather than having the meeting, you know, carried over. So.
I just think it needs to be made clear at this point that no decision by the council that. at this point isn't indicative that there would not be a final decision subsequent to the Enterprise Drive. That may in fact bring it back to what had been, been considered this evening. And I think the public's aware of that.
Right. And just so that the public is aware of it...
There'd have to be due diligence on their part and vigilance as to what occurs at the next meeting as well.
Right. And just so that the public knows that there is a timeframe for us to post and advertise, I believe it's three weeks, so it wouldn't even come back, you know, at the next meeting.
I think it's going to take a little while for us to be able to get the easement in place from the association. So I would suggest that it's probably going to be a meeting in August or September when we would bring this back before the council.
Okay. With that said, I'm going to open this back up to the microphone, to the public for any comments on this discussion.
Ed Lawson again. If you're going to have another public hearing, informational or otherwise, I think you should put both of these alternatives on the calendar so that everybody from both neighborhoods shows, or all three neighborhoods shows up so that you get that information all together so you don't have the people from Enterprise come in and make a good case, and then the council says, well, we don't want to hurt those people, so we're going to go back the other way. Let's get everybody here. Let's make a decision. It's been too long.
I agree.
Possibly the best thing would be for us to advertise that public hearing or informational hearing for two options to be considered. And we'll keep the option that was here this evening as well as the future. One of the other things that I do want to place on the record is, in addition to us needing an easement from Teft Hill, I believe when we do the research, we're going to find we're going to need an easement from National Grid as well. Because National, where you see the end of Enterprise Terrace there, you'll see that that's where the power lines run through. So National Grid has an easement there. If, and that easement is across the open space of Teft Hill. So if they already have an easement, they have exclusive rights and use of that property. We may not be able to go to Enterprise Drive without having National Grid also sign off. So that's why I think it's going to take me a while to be able to make sure that that is a legal connection that would be possible, even if Teft Hill provides us with the, with the easement availability. So we will have to deal with National Grid.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, Steve, just, can you connect with the Teft Hill folks, see how soon they're going to have a board meeting, executive board? They need a vote of the entire, just how soon can they pull that together?
July 19th at 7:00 PM.
I knew you were ready with that answer.
I think what we'll do is we'll ask Michael to see if he can prepare the necessary easement for their consideration prior to that date.
Okay. Any other comments here at the table? Any other comments with the public before we, so we have agreed we're going to close this public hearing?
Yes, I move we close this public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Abstention motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you for your participation and a dialogue back and forth to hopefully take us to a point where everyone's happy.
Do we need a motion on what we're going to do?
We're going to just continue it as an informational meeting and...
Why don't you say that? It's going to be continued.
I don't think it's going to be. If we can just have a clarification, wait a minute.
Steve?
Steve?
Jim, not, not.
Steve?
Mike, somebody.
Just a question here at the town council table before anyone leaves. So we're all leaving with the same information. The question has just arisen, is this going to be continued? I think what Steve's going to do is post an advertise for Plan A, Plan B, a new public hearing. Okay? Does that clarify it, Kathy?
That's good. Now you all have to come back. All right, Daryl.
Doral.
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 And there's going to be...
Doral.
Bruhaha and Yorl.
Daryl, Daryl.
Remember that? Thanks, Dale. Good throwing that one in there.
Okay.
Our interested citizens just left.
Yeah.
We're going to have any comments?
Let me tell you, I am going to balk a lot of these. I'm balking a lot of these.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Let's move, let's move.
Talk about new business. As on the agenda.
And we have, we still have an executive session.
I know.
We still have. I have not even eaten supper so far.
I haven't either.
I'm diabetic. I've got perfect blood in my mouth.
Are we going? Are we going to move? Are we going to, are we moving? Or can Kathy go to the ladies' room?
There's no more interested citizens left.
Thanks, Ed.
I'd like to thank you people for your infinite patience. I haven't been to a town council meeting in a lot of years, and...
Are things improved?
Very patient people.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You come to more now? That you've been to one? But come back now. Or you'll have to come to another.
Thank you, Ed.
You know, I still think my idea years ago was the right one, was tax credits, five or $10 and multiples if you hit two or three times. Really, we need, we need witnesses.
It's much more fun than they're here.
It really is. Gosh.
I appreciate you.
I know.
Did anybody ask you if you left a camera here last time? Did they ask you?
No.
All right, because we have a camera that was left just downstairs.
See everyone soon.
You didn't leave the camera, did you?
I think you sent it here pretty well. Oh, sorry about that. Yeah.
So hot.
It's not too bad tonight, Ella, is it?
Yeah, I just wish that the fans were like, "Underline, over mine."
But the air is moving a little.
I guess, I guess the saying is right.
Bob, thank you for hanging in there. I think you're our only guest left.
Now you know what they mean. Show up one. I need Carol. Okay.
Here we are.
Okay, I believe this brings us now to comments from interested citizens. So, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak, comments from interested citizens. Bob?
More fun than anything I've done all day.
We're going to serve popcorn next time.
Anyway, because I went fishing and got nothing. Anyway...
Too bad.
You know, it, well, wait, there's some people here. I thought everybody left. But this is one of my gripes. You've heard it before. I mean, it's nothing wrong with the people leaving now. They had a reason to be here, and they, they participated, and they moved you to listen and moved you to think about this a little bit longer. And I think it should be thought about a little bit longer. I think it, a good decision has been made to look at both of those options and to let both people participate. I just wish, again, that every once in a while, you can have these kinds of meetings where we start talking about education, and we start talking about all of the real problems that are going on that are, I listened to something today on one of the C-SPAN stations, you know, about the global warming thing and everything. I had a panel, unbelievable group of people, brilliant. I couldn't, and I don't know, not that we should be talking about things like that all the time, but I don't know. There's a lot on the agenda out there. I think you all know that probably better than I do. It's just, I just wish more people would be interested in coming in once in a while and just making a few comments. I'd like to hear them so I could respond to them. And on that note, I'm going to say goodnight myself because I'm kind of tired.
We'll see you at the beach.
You've done well. You've done well.
See ya. Any other comments from interested citizens?
You too, Steve.
Well, I'm going to ask anyone to speak about the 12-meter regatta. If someone wants to just briefly speak about that. I know that I did attend, and it was absolutely delightful last Thursday. Any comments, Jim, or Carol, or?
Jimmy, you going to take it away, or?
Ladies first.
You want me to start? Well, it was a great event with the 12-meter, the South County 12-meter regatta that was on Thursday, the 21st, because it had to be the hottest day of the year so far. But it was a beautiful event of the six old 12-meters racing off of Narragansett Pier. It was a joint effort between the South Kingstown Town Council, the Narragansett Town Council, the South Kingstown Economic Development Committee, and the Narragansett Economic Development Committee, the South County Tourism. Did I leave anybody out, Jim?
No, I think you've covered it.
And the regatta sponsors, I want to thank Matuna Goyster Bar and Perry Rosso for being a sponsor of, I forget which boat, but it was, they did a great job. And the Muse Tavern, I want to thank David Barnes, Dan Rubino, and George McCullough for sponsoring another one of the 12-meter yachts. And Jim, I know you have more to say about this. You did a lot of work on this whole project. There were vendors, there were sailboat races, there was a cocktail party at the Towers.
Yeah, what a great...
The only one, Jim, that didn't, didn't know about this was the God of the Wind.
God of the Wind. I guess I should thank Bald Hill Dodge Chrysler Jeep Kia for sitting out there with two cars in the boiling heat.
All right, Jim?
I was certainly going to thank them too. What I hope happens here, I think the last committee meeting after the race is that the committee will be offering, hopefully, a full-page newspaper ad, our thanks to all those folks that participated, not only the sponsors and patrons, town officials, volunteers, but those vendors who suffered with incredible heat that day. Everyone just had to drink water and nothing else, unfortunately, very little sold. And Bald Hill Dodge Chrysler was there, salesmen out there. Everyone did a great job.
Tarbox was out there also.
Tarbox out there. The Matty Fund was out there. All the local restaurants from both towns were there. It was incredible turnout, absolutely incredible turnout. And Carol brought up Matuna Goyster Bar as well as the Muse, who, what can you say about some of our small businesses here in town? They always step to the plate, always there when you need help. And that's a great thing about small business and the great people in the community. But also, too, I'd like to thank the Holiday Inn. A lot of people forget about Doug Brady, who manages up there. He put together the brochures that really helped us corral the sponsors and patrons. Mako Surgical, who makes those computerized robotic arms, which have helped our local orthopedic group and in turn, South County Hospital. They picked up and sponsored a full boat. Newport Fed, local bank, Southern Rhode Island that really is there for small business. Really incredible. And the Coast Guard House Restaurant, although they're in Narragansett, the former Cola and Caprio families also own Casey's here in Wakefield. But going back to the Coast Guard House, Bobby Leonard is also a partner over there. And they could have stood by and just captured all the folks coming to that area of Narragansett. But they didn't. They, they became a sponsor. They served a great menu up in the Towers between noon and 9:00 PM. And a special thanks again to Bob Leonard and his wife for all the hard work that day. And then also working in South Kingstown, the University of Rhode Island, Sharon Pavagnano, and I apologize for my pronunciation, a scientist with the university, a professor, I think, at one time, working with the foundation now, knows probably more about oceans and tides and currents and everything else. I learned more about sailing from her and two meetings with her there than I did in 50 years of sailing in my days back in Barrington. So, so look at all that South Kingstown has to offer, and look at everyone that stepped to the plate and what, really, an absolute great day. And as I said, we'll be putting a real thank you together for everyone here, all the volunteers, and again, the vendors who had a tough day. And there wasn't a single individual that was on one of those 12-meters who, it wasn't an opportunity of a lifetime. So thanks to all the towns, thanks to South County Tourism Council with Myrna George, and just a, just a great, fun day. So thank you to everyone.
I just have, just a few things that I just want to say. Attended a partial, partial time for our South Kingstown High School graduation. Just kudos to having another wonderful graduation at the Ryan Center, and good luck to all of the graduates. Also attended on June 13th, a meeting with the governor with the Washington County Regional Planning. And last Thursday was the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, so they're working on that placard to bring back to the town council. And then, just a date, June 30th, I believe there is a New Life Block Party. Just wanted to bring that date forward. So anybody else have anything for the good of the order? We're going to move on. Town manager's report.
Couple of things in the report. I did want to make reference to the fact that the towns of South Kingstown, Narragansett, and United Water have again joined in establishing a, imposing a outdoor water use ban on alternating odd and even days. Customers with odd-numbered street addresses may water on the odd day. Those customers with even-numbered street addresses would be able to water, use water for outdoor purposes on the even-numbered days. We do this on an annual basis based on being able to provide necessary volume during the summer months because water, both as far as the water pressure is necessary as well as fire protection. If we lose the two 400,000-gallon tanks as far as having that capacity available for fire protection, it jeopardizes the safety within the community. And the same holds true within the general Wakefield area as well as Narragansett. Second item I wanted to mention is that on Saturday, June 30th, from 8:00 to 1:00 o'clock, South Kingstown will again be hosting the state with the Eco Depot. And this is for all household hazardous waste collection and disposal. It will be here at the town hall. So anybody who needs to get rid of materials that are of a hazardous nature, whether it be paints or fuels or oils, those types of materials, or really any other type of material that may be pesticides or agricultural products that are on a date, all of those materials can be taken through the, through the depot and properly disposed of. The state does an excellent job in terms of having a hazardous waste management firm which takes the materials from the vehicle itself and does the proper disposal. In most cases, the person bringing the materials doesn't even need to get out of the vehicle. Third item I wanted to reference is that in the June 14 memorandum to the council, we have provided for final certification on the 2012, 2013 property tax levy program. The property tax rate for the 2012, 2013 year will be at $14.50 or one cent less than what the current year rate was at $14.51. As referenced in the memorandum, motor vehicle tax exemption will be on the first $3,000 of value. As the council will recall, only the first $500 in value is reimbursed by the state. The other 2,500 is a, at the discretion of the town council in the development of the budget. It's also noted that as far as the grand list increase for the year, grand list increase was limited to approximately 0.15%. However, that was because of the fact that we lost about $19 million in tangible properties. Our real estate role as far as residential did increase by about $25.3 million. But based on the tangible loss, most of which was in APC, tangible holdings reductions of around 18 million, we ended up with a net of about... we ended up with a net of about 15 basis points. Motor vehicles' roll is up about 7% over the current year or about $12.5 million. So overall, we're seeing the taxable roll increase by about a, approximately a $16 million growth net. We're generating about $278,000 in new property taxes over what the current year had. And that amount is down considerably from what legally we could have levied at a 4% increase. The tax exemptions for our veterans, widows of veterans, Gold Star, service disability or POWs is down about $3,000 this year. We're continuing to see a reduction in the number of persons that receive the veterans exemption. It's down from 874 in the current year, down to 848 next year. We're also seeing widows of veterans decrease from 313 down to 305. And unfortunately, we're seeing the service disability increase from 27 to 31. So there's some changes there. We are no longer carrying any Gold Star parents within our program. The overall tax exemptions that are provided based on those statutory exemptions is about $157,000 or about $10.5 million in taxable property which is taken from the roll. We're also expecting the motive, the amount of elderly tax exemptions to stay at around the $145,000 to $165,000 range. We've already got applications over $135,000. We've always allowed those to trickle in over the next several months. So it'll probably come in at around the target number of about $140,000 in additional tax relief that will be provided on a sliding scale based on a means test for our elderly population. Other than those three issues, unless council has questions, I yield to the solicitor.
Any questions for Steve? Jim?
A quick one. Are we just about zeroed out with APC and the tangibles?
Yeah, I'm not expecting that there'll be additional reductions. There may be some, but it won't be in the $18 million range.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve?
I do want to still, you know, just on Jim's point, I want to also indicate thanks to APC because APC had the ability, based on the amount of equipment that was removed two years ago,
Right.
to take about a $38 million reduction in one year. They said to us, we do not want to have adverse impact on our parent community and we'll take the reduction over a two-year period. So it was appreciated in terms of smoothing out what that impact would have been if it had all occurred in one year.
Yeah, most appreciative.
Thank you. We're going to move on to town solicitor's report.
Last Monday, the hearing officer in the Department of Business Regulation for Liquor Control Administration issued a decision in the Village Liquors case involving the Class A liquor license reversing the decision of the town council. And basically because under state law, this hearing officer had the right to hear the case de novo and to do, to decide to reverse you. That's what he did. He came to the conclusion that a fifth license did indeed exist. He did that very quickly in the beginning of his decision. From there, most of his decision goes on to explain how Village Liquors met all the requirements for being issued a license. So once he made the decision that you in fact had five liquor licenses, all the other criteria just fell into place and therefore he reasoned that the license must be issued. Later on this evening in executive session, I would discuss with the council the various options that are before you, including the option to appeal that decision to the Superior Court if you decide to go in that direction. But I'll give you my thoughts on that in executive session.
Thank you. We are going to move on to appointments. Thank you, Michael.
Well, we have a few appointments tonight. I make a motion that we appoint Larry Fish to the Economic Development Committee for a period of three years. His term will expire in March of 2015.
Motion and second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries, 500.
I make another motion that we appoint Leo Murphy to the Waterfront Advisory Commission. His term expires this month, June 2012, and it would, he would be appointed for a three-year period till June 2015.
Second?
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries, 500.
I move that we appoint Patricia E. Gardner to the Economic Development Committee. She would, that appointment would be for a three-year period starting in today. So it'd be June, from today's date till June 2015.
Second?
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that we appoint Joseph J. Pelino to the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee for a period of two years, starting today. And his term would expire in June of 2014.
We have a second?
Second?
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one more?
Oh. I also make a motion. Do you have that paper? I got it. I make a motion appointing Helen DeSanto to the Canvassing Authority to complete a term to expire in March 2015.
Second?
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries, 500. Thank you. Which brings us to new business. And I'm going to not read through new business item A and B, and I'm going to block these together. It's the schedule of wastewater rates as well as the water user rate schedule. I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Wastewater rates are going up $4 from $225 to $229. It's a 1.7% increase. That 1.75% increase carries through with an increase of $285 going to $2.90 on the excess. We're also looking at about a 1.7% increase on the water rates. Water rates currently are $175 for the 5/8 residential meter. That will go to $178 or a 1.7% increase. That carries on. The minimum charge will go from $291 to $297, which is a 2% increase. We'll also see the larger meters go from $175 to $178 for the first unit. And the, I'm sorry, $175 to $178, the $3 increase. And on additional units will go from current $75 to $77. Water, fire protection will increase 1.8% from $281 to $286. Private protection goes up by about 1.7% for each of those. Those are the rates that were incorporated into the 2012-2013 year budgets and were adopted as a part of the council's overall budget for the 2012-13 year.
I move approval of new business item A and B.
Second?
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries for A and B. Which brings us to C, and I do want to read this unless... This is a resolution supporting the nomination of Roland Fiori to the Board of Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation as follows. Roland Fiori. Whereas Governor Chafee has nominated Roland Fiori as a candidate for appointment to the Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation. And whereas it is necessary to promote economic growth for all of our citizens and for future generations to come, and Roland Fiori has the knowledge, expertise, and experience to get the job done. Whereas since 1988, Roland has been president of South County Sand and Gravel Incorporated, with business interests ranging from road building and concrete manufacturing to residential and commercial property development. He is a 1984 graduate of the University of Rhode Island and currently serves as the Secretary of the Rhode Island Builders Association. Whereas Roland knows what it takes for a local business and a small business to survive in this economy and has the knowledge, expertise, and experience with financing and managing a successful local business. He can bring all of his knowledge and the expertise to Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation. Now therefore, we, the town council of the town of South Kingstown, do hereby request Senator McCaffrey and the Senate Judiciary Committee, Senator V. Susan Sisnowski, and Representatives Lally, TNZ, Dickinson, and Walsh to support the governor's nomination of Roland Fiori to the Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation. Can I have a motion, please?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. New business item D is financial management procedures as shown on Exhibit 1, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
I suggest you block D and E together. Both of these are directives as far as setting the chart of accounts for the general fund. And item E is recognizing the six enterprise and special revenue funds that are part of the budget that was adopted on April 30th by the town council for the 2012-2013 year. E just provides the finance director with the responsibility for overall budget administration in accordance with the adopted budget.
Thank you. We have a motion for D and E, please.
Second?
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. New business item G. This is for town ownership and maintenance of the road associated infrastructure with the Heritage Estate subdivision.
This was the first subdivision that was done with a flexible design. It's an R80 zone, 10 lots. It was phased over two sections. First six lots were recorded, I believe, in 2009. The next four would be in 2013. This is also going to have two affordable housing units that would be within the subdivision itself. Recommend that the council pass the resolution as President of the Year Agenda to take that into the town highway system with the appropriate deposit of funds with the finance for maintenance guarantees.
Thank you.
Second?
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to new business item H, which is non-union town personnel fiscal year 2012-13 salary benefits adjustments.
Five different issues came forward after the negotiation of the NEA contract. We looked at the same benefit adjustments that were made within that contract for the non-organized group, which constitutes 41, excuse me, 41 full-time members. First change was in the healthcare buyback. The existing buyback would be about $3,066 or 50% of an individual cost of service. That would be reduced to $2,000 for anybody participating in a buyback. Post-employment healthcare for persons hired prior to July of 2006 would increase by about $500 for those with 30 years. Would go from $4,500 for a three-year period to $5,000. After 25, for 25 years with retirement, it would go to $4,000 from the $3,500. And it would be up $661 for people retiring after 20 years. The third item was the increase in the number of personal leave by one day, effective as of July 1st of 2012. A requirement that personal vehicle use would increase from current 40 cents to 40.5 cents to 51 cents or whatever the going rate is through IRS. And the fifth was a no-cost item, which was to allow part-time employees of 15 hours to be able to buy into the town's health insurance program at their cost. Those were the five adjustments that would be necessary for the non-union personnel for the moving forward in 1213.
I move approval of new business item H.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to bulk together I, J, K, and L, new business. I is analytical laboratory testing services. J is municipal building refuse collection contract. K is municipal building refuse collection contract. And L is municipal building refuse collection contract.
We have agreements from several of the vendors that have worked for us in the past two years to be able to extend their contracts at existing rates. Premier Laboratory, which does the analytical laboratory testing, we would maintain the same contract cost for the 1213 year. And we would also establish a new cost associated with additional sampling that's required by the state. The item J is an extension of the contract with Waste Haulers LLC to provide regular refuse disposal. When we went out to bid last year, their price was at $24,668. They'll hold that price for the 1213 year. Next lowest bid was $29,382. So we felt that going back out to bid, we would see a higher price than what had been bid in current year. Same holds true for item K, Waste Management, Inc., a different company, had the bid for grit package disposal. That's from the wastewater treatment facility. Their price was in at $14,175. It'll be maintained for the year. And it'll be, and last year, they were low bidder by about $300. Item L is the extension of the contract for the sludge transportation package. Last year, they bid $19,950. They'll hold that price. The next lowest bidder last year was $39,900 or $20,000 more. If we can maintain that price for 1213, we felt that it was better to extend contracts than to go out for new bid.
Thank you, Steve. Could I have a motion for I, J, K, and L, please? New business? Second?
Second?
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. New business item M is in reference to Stony Fort Rose, Road Phase 1 Road Construction Project, Reconstruction Project.
Recommendation is to water contract to Deambra Construction in an amount not to exceed $752,960. This would provide for road reconstruction between Route 138 and Slocum Road going into North Kingstown. It's approximately a 7,500-foot section of the road. 4,500 feet of that 7,500 feet are owned jointly with the towns of North Kingstown. 50% of the lane is in North Kingstown. 50% is in South Kingstown. I think they have more potholes than we do. We will be the principal contractor for the job. We expect that of the base bid, which was $712,958, North Kingstown's share on their 4,500 linear feet would be about $228,000. Therefore, it's about a 6733 split with South Kingstown's cost being around $485,000. We would hope to have this job start in July and hopefully to have it complete on or about September 1st with everything other than the landscaping. There'll also be drainage swale work that'll be done as a component of this project to deal with some of the street water runoff which occurs on this stretch of road. I think it's a great example of two communities working together, providing for one viable project that would have required considerable additional cost if each of the communities held responsibility solely for their portion of the ownership.
I move approval of new business item M. Good job, Steve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And if I can bulk together N, O, and P. N is municipal buildings heating system replacement project. N is municipal buildings heating system replacement project. O is abatement of uncollectible taxes. And P is for our government financial management software. RFP, recommendation.
Item M is an amendment of the contract with Atlantic Control Systems. Council awarded this at the last council meeting for the replacement of the boilers at the town hall and at Peasdale Library. What we're looking to do now is, since we're working with the university, where we would replace the boilers at both of the Silver Lake Pump Station and the Kingston Pump Station. The cost was at $21,600 for each of the unit replacements, for a $43,200 cost. URI's cost share would be $26,447, and South Kingston's around $16,008 for that total project cost. If we were not replacing these boilers with the gas connectors, we would have to look at putting additional storage facilities for the oil, for the generators at the plant, and we would also have to deal with clean air standards. So I think this is a real good solution, and also demonstrative of cooperation with the university as a regional partner in the wastewater treatment plant. So I'd recommend the Council of Ward of this amendment to the original contract with Atlantic Controls.
Thank you, Steve. Could I have a motion for N, O, and P, please?
I move approval of those new business items.
Have a second? Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business item Q is a resolution that program balances identified below in the 2011-12 fiscal year appropriations for general fund shall be transferred to the following reserve funds and corresponding net to its seating mounts, as presented on the agenda.
Could I ask, before you get there, did we skip O and P?
Oh, I thought we had...
I did N, O, and P together.
Okay, I didn't report on O and P.
Okay.
On O, we're talking about the abatement of $30,015 in property taxes, and this is over a multiple years period. It is principally in the 2001 tax receivable for motor vehicles, in the amount of $17,529. As Alan points out in the memorandum, the statute of limitation to the 10 years is up. We also have several taxes in the 04, 5, 6, 7, and 8, 9 year. Those are four where there have been bankruptcies, or the taxpayer has expired, is deceased. So as Alan points out in the memo, even with this abatement, we're still looking at collecting well over 99 percent of the tax levy from that 2001 year. Recommend that the council approve that as presented. On item P, item P is an award of contract to Bloom-Sapiro and Company in the amount of $60,000 for the development of the governmental financial management system software that the town and the school department will need to develop over the next three- to five-year period. This contract with Bloom-Sapiro would assist the town in doing the needs assessment for the software, and looking at best management practices for all of our financial management practices, both within the utilities, the school department, and the general fund, and then developing the necessary request proposal for that software, as well as negotiating with the submitting agencies for providing the software. We're expecting that the overall cost on the software packages that would be incorporated into the financial management software program is probably in the area of $700 to $750,000. That cost would be shared within the general fund, the school fund, as well as each of the special enterprise, special revenue or enterprise funds, any place where there's financial management services required. There would be probably in the area of 30 different modules that would be used anywhere from, and this goes along with what had been presented to the council as a component of the capital improvement program. We do need the outside services. I'd also note for the record that Bloom-Sapiro also is the town's auditor for financial purposes. The company has approximately 35 individuals that work within the public sector in multiple states. The two individuals that came in that will be principals on this project have in excess of 35 years of experience in terms of public sector software development and financial management practice. So we think that it's a good marriage to bring that in. We can get this, my timeframe is that we're looking to be able to have this review completed and the negotiation of a software program vendor, probably in November, December timeframe. I'd like to see financial management begin to cut over as of July 1 of next year, and probably dealing with payroll sometime in January of 2014. Each of those would take six to nine months, in terms of prep time to be able to make use of that software. So this is a very important contract as part of the capital improvement program, which the council adopted back in February.
Thanks. And we did vote on M and O and P.
Yes, we did.
We did. So we're going to move on to Q. Okay, Steve?
Item Q, we're expecting that within the general fund that closes as of June 30 of 2012, to be reporting a surplus of, a surplus, within that surplus, we're asking that dollars be committed toward the data processing improvement fund to be able to pay for the governmental financial software systems that we will be acquiring. This would be the general fund contribution of $350,000. We also, on an annual basis, if there's dollars that are available within the streets and highway department, most of that would be snow plowing associated, either sand, salt, or the cost of overtime, that those dollars be directed into the Public Works Improvement Reserve. That way, the dollars are available for us to continue with an aggressive schedule of road improvements. Past year fundings have provided us with the opportunity to be able to do Stony Fort Road, which we have just, which the council just voted on. So I would request that the transfers, as listed in the finance director's memorandum under item Q, be approved by the council as presented. Overall, we're looking at about $500,000 of whatever the overall surplus would be as of June 30 that would be transferred to these two reserve accounts.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion for new business Q.
I move approval of new business item Q.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to new business item 14. This is a closed executive session. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, Village Liquors LLC versus Town of South Kingston. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Dale?
Council Vice President McAtee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neill?
Yes.
An affirmative vote to recess to close the executive session at 10:37.
Thank you, Dale.
We also need a motion to be able to go past 11.